Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, we'll go back into open session. I'm sorry?
Page eighty-nine appears in the book.
I'm still making minutes on the closed session. And we will sing "What A Friend We Have In Jesus."
It doesn't matter to me. I don't care.
You wanna do that, just do...
No, he's already turning the pages.
Okay.
Uh, Joe McClain. Oh, the photographer? I have no idea. Just make it Joe McClain. That was the report. That's... Lynn is very efficient. What did we decide on that?
I wanted to spread out.
I wanted to have the night frisbee game. There was a group that wanted to talk about doing a night frisbee.
They did that over Thanksgiving.
Oh, did they? Okay.
You have to ask the park superintendent.
Did we get him a name? Did we get him a name tag?
We've tried that. We want to name it, you know, some things out there at the park, but he says not to.
We'd like to thank you for your donated services as being the park superintendent.
Speaking of that, he wants to talk to you about cutting grass after he retires. Are we ready?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Lynn's not back, but we're not doing it.
She's gone.
Yep. Okay.
Ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
We're ready.
Basically, to start out the income side, we agree with everything. We rely on... We rely on Kristin to come up with those numbers anyhow, and, you know, we put this together back in July and August, so I'm sure the numbers changed, so there's no questions there. Under salaries, the first... We held off. We talked to Kristin. We had several changes in our budget. This week, we'll be submitting some of those ahead of time. This is on the maintenance worker ones, going to equipment operator ones after basically a year's time. We've got four of those.
Four, yes.
We'll be submitting to you pay for us for that. So I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention before I gave it to you, so you understood what was going on. We would like to include two positions in, I think it was just two, wasn't it, or...
Three, I think.
Yeah, three positions where we'd like to promote people from equipment operator one to equipment operator two. We met again with Kristin. We had it in our budget, but she felt this was something we need to discuss with you. Since we're in an open session, I really prefer not to mention names, but we would like to do three promotions. We can get you that information. I like to email it to you or whatever.
So just a little background. Originally, when we did the new salary starting salary schedule, we talked about a maintenance worker automatically moving to equipment operator after a year as long as they've met the requirements of road and bridge for their learning different pieces of equipment and things like that. So that one, we kind of knew was coming. The equipment operator one to equipment operator two, we didn't have any set determination of what that movement was. So I told them that they needed to come to you for that change and talk to you about that.
These are gentlemen out there that's operating. We have them currently operating as an equipment operator two, and we'd like to be able to fund them and say, like I said, I can forward that information to you. Again, mentioning by names, I prefer not to do that.
What we're trying to do too on these is they're on different crews, so if we got a couple operators on each crew, somebody's gone, the crew can still continue on like they always have been, but...
What's the bond on that equipment operator one to equipment operator two?
It'd be the flat 2,000, yeah.
And then how many did you have going from maintenance worker to equipment operator one?
Four. And the... Those four were already in our budget. I've been talking to Kristin. They had landed on that last year already. If we'd known that, I would've been gracious, but I'll be honest, we didn't. So the ones to twos would be something new again. So there's a bump in there, and that's why you see there's a difference. You had to reduce our budget somewhat because of that, and that's what that's from. The 9,000, it's include the additional loggers and serp and stuff, so...
How many maintenance workers do you still have?
That will eliminate maintenance worker position.
They've been here long enough now. All of them will be equipment operator.
Okay, so you don't have any open positions or...
No.
Okay.
No. Another thing that we were just talking about, you know, we discussed earlier, Johnny Jones did retire in November. And we talked to you last year when we did some of the promotions last year, we said we would drop the position. We have done, are proposing it, but I think it's still in... Still in the budget. We'll have to take that back out. We also removed Krista Nelges, Brenda Peters, retired early in the year. We're actually, well, we already have moved Krista from road and bridge to planning. So we've actually be dropping two positions out of road and bridge. We've asked that Krista's position be kept open with road and bridge at least temporarily, just to see if we can handle the workload, because that takes us back to three office staff, making sure we're able to cover. Right now, we're doing all right. But I think, again, with the retirements coming up, I think we may be losing one person. It'd be nice if we had that position where we possibly hire somebody in to be able to train with the person that's gonna retire with us next year, so...
So right now, I have that position out, because I moved it to planning. But I have the position from the retirement still in there and haven't removed it yet.
So you didn't leave the office position in public works?
I didn't.
But we still have Johnny.
Right, as an equipment operator three.
Right.
So there's some savings there, because I did not remove that retired position.
Right.
But we would like to leave that position open. Again, if the person that's be retiring is, at least what she's expressed to us, is a very important part. We'd like to be able to get somebody hired in to work with her side by side for a period before she retires, so we can get that, to have a smooth transition once we leave, so... The other thing, we had additional money in our part-time salaries. That was what we are running up on is our snow, our back, our relief drivers and our snow plows. We'd like to increase them from twelve to fourteen dollars an hour. You know, it's... I won't say it's...
It's getting harder to find people to come in at night.
For twelve dollars an hour. And they're usually working from eight o'clock at night to four o'clock or five o'clock in the morning. You know, we'd like to be able to offer them a little more to be able to come in there, so...
How many of those people do we have?
Currently have, like, five. We used to have, like, eight or nine.
Twelve.
Twelve at one time.
Twelve at one time. Guys getting older, they used to come in and do it for us, so...
Right.
And so basically, it's just when it snows?
Yeah, it just when it snows.
It's just winter months, yeah.
When we send, what we do with those guys is when we send our main crew home at night, we try and work them during the daylight hours where they're the most effective. We normally try and send our guys home around eight o'clock at night, and bring them back in between four and five the next morning. These guys are there just to answer emergency calls and try and keep, we normally have them running our main routes just to make sure they're kept open and plowed off. So again, we'd like to raise that, their salary for that, so...
So that line is a little unpredictable, depending on how many snows we have and things like that. Because you can see right now, their total in there is about 26,331 for the year, and we budgeted forty. So I think there is some wiggle room there if we need it, depending on how many snows we would have.
Yeah, and again, we're not opposed to leaving where it is, just with the understanding, if we do run up to our budget number, that we'd like to be able to increase that to our contingency at the time. It's whatever y'all decide, but I just want to have the option to be able to make sure we have people there at night when we're sending our guys on. Otherwise, it's real hard to get Larry to leave the office if he doesn't have somebody out there, so...
Can we separate part-time out as far as winter and summer?
Right.
That would be more of a payroll question. I mean, right now, they come out of the same line because they're tied to the same pay code, so you'd have to create a separate code.
Well, can you see how much we had in May, June, July, August?
Yeah, so you can...
I don't know if that answers Chris's question. I don't know if he's trying to see how much we've spent on...
Yeah, so from about June to the end of August, you're spending somewhere between three... Three and four thousand of pay period, whereas the rest of the year, you can see, like, we had a snow in January, and we probably had a snow in March.
Are you gonna put the part-timers to fourteen dollars a month?
No.
This the winter.
Yes.
So that's even, probably even less.
Yeah, no, we're paying part, the summer help, around ten dollars an hour is what we're paying. I think it was nine eighty-two last year or something, and we normally try and give them that part-time same call that employees get, so... One thing in equipment service contract, we did, we, it's only two hundred and sixty dollars, but we had stuck a little money in there for our alarm repairs. The system that we've had in there, we did replace most of it three years ago. Three or four years, three or four years ago, so, but just, you know, the sensors go out every once in a while. We have, but the motion sensors and stuff every once in a while. Again, it's no big deal. We're not asking it to be changed, but if we do run into some alarm repairs, that would, we're probably come in. Under electric, it's fifty-three, two ninety-eight point zero zero one. Just off our minimum payments, we're concerned that this is gonna be short this year. We'd like to see it increased by a hundred and fifty dollars. This is where we pay for the Big Horn Roundabout, the Pioneer Trail traffic light, and the Pioneer Trail roundabout lights out of this. And based on Joyce's estimates on the fall, or the stuff, you know, it, we feel we're gonna be a little short there.
So Larry, we go through that and do each, like, we do six months worth of?
I know she's been trying to start paying some of those on a monthly basis like you, yeah, so...
So we've estimated, slowly gonna get there, estimated out what each of those is in total?
Yeah, Joyce has.
Okay.
And that's where she comes up with that, sixteen hundred.
Okay, that, I mean, that's where we got ours from.
Yeah.
It was estimating what you've paid each month and...
Yeah, well, I don't think, I think we're finally getting, we're down to pay those on a monthly basis like you requested, so I think that's gonna give more accurate, because we're paying just minimum payments on most of those, so... You know. We think the, we had some changes, there are some changes proposed under trash. We're good with that. We do have the metal recycling bin there now that we're putting all of our scrap parts that aren't any good for anything else, if we're in there, where we recycle them. We don't think there's gonna be issue. We do have a large thirty-yard container dumpster that we can, we utilize when we pick up trash that people dumped out along the road, you know, the couches, the mattresses and stuff like that. We can throw that in bulk items in there and get rid of them, so...
Is that becoming more of an issue, or...
It seems like it for us. It, we get, you know, more and more, it seems like we're picking up tires out on there, you know, tires. And so what we've talked about doing, we're not sure, we're probably gonna continue to recycle as we can with the tire pickup. But we found out when we were going through with DNR this year, we actually cut them. We're talking about at least trying out a shear to see if we can cut tires with those. Where we put on skid steer and just cut them up in pieces and then be able to throw them into that bin, but they had to be cut it into quarters or...
In half.
In half. But unless you have a shear or something to do it, it's a pain with the steel belts and everything, trying to cut them. So that's something we're looking into. If it would work with the shear, we may be looking at purchasing one where we can just leave it on a bucket if we're not using it, shear the tires. Because we pick up a lot of tires. There's some, I noticed, though, Dan, I forgot to call you about it. I can't remember where it was at.
Is that, then they're going, then you're throwing them in the dumpster and they're going to the landfill?
Yeah, if we cut them, we can.
Right.
But if we don't, and then they, we have to store them, and we got in trouble with DNR for having the tires there on our facility. That was one of the things we got.
We had a company from Fulton come and pick those up, so we got those rid of.
We actually paid...
So DNR wants you to recycle and keep them out of the landfill, but you can't hold them until you have time to take them there. That's stupid.
I know.
So what's the shear, what's the shear cost?
District all the time has their places where we can dump them in Columbia. We have that collection once a year.
Yeah.
And DNR's behind that, so tell them they need to have a collection quarterly.
Well, we tried arguing a little bit, but, you know, we had enough other things.
Who do we need to talk to? Because if we can hold on to them, keep them out of landfills, makes complete sense.
Yeah, I agree, so it's just things we're looking at.
Well, you can put them in the landfill. You just gotta cut them in half.
I don't want them to do the landfill.
Oh, yeah, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard, so, and, I mean, somebody ought to be able to recycle them and turn them back into new tires.
Yeah.
I mean, melt them.
Well, they haven't found a whole lot that they've been able to recycle tires.
Yeah, the only thing I really know is play mulch and playground and stuff, so that I've seen.
I've seen the last two. That's just a good thing to work with right now.
The other one that Joyce was concerned about was the Brazito. Again, that's just based off of the monthly bill, Kristin, that we, we're concerned that we're gonna be short there. And she's got in her, I can give you this if you want, it's just got the average monthly, so... Okay, next on the list was the repairs. She, and we, I think we increase, or increased parts, and we also increased repairs. What we're running into is we're gonna have, you know, Tyler and Mitchell, and Jake can only do so much. We're gonna have to start farming some of that. We actually did some this year where we took equipment back to let the dealer work on it. We're concerned. We'd like to have that twenty thousand put back in there. We had it at forty thousand. We've had a grader in our shop now for several months. That Tyler just hadn't had a chance. He got it tore down and repaired, but it's just now getting it put back together. We need to be able to, some of that, we need to be able to cycle a little quicker than what we're doing, so... Other than that, the rest...
That, I would say whether you put it back in now or just know if we get to that point, you know, we may need to get more out.
Again, we're easy to work with. We're not pushing one way or the other. We're just explaining to you why we'd increase that number.
We're gonna do as much in-house as we possibly can, but there's just times we can't get it all in.
That's basically it for road and bridge.
Do we go back to the part-time? The summer months are three to forty-five hundred dollars per month. So, you know, we're talking about raising the part-time just for the snow removal. So really, not much.
I think we could track it easy enough with just having a single light on, if you can. Can you bring that back?
Yes, I can.
Just show Chris, see it.
I didn't know if in payroll or somewhere, if you could break that out and, you know, so if there's a part-time, another pay code or whatever that you could do, part-time for snow removal, part-time for lawn mowing or whatever it is, just so that you have good data on what they're actually doing.
And like I said, if you look there, Chris, basically, everything until about June is when we hire, and they usually stay till about the end of September. You know, we usually have one or two that, there's some in September. But you can see up there, the ones up on the top, that was the snow removal. You know, we can separate it for each. And what I do in the budget is we've got a number of part-time that we, we plan for every summer that we include in there. And then also, we take the average. What I've been doing the last few years is I've got like four or five years of snow removal, and I just take the average of those expenses that we've had over the past winter. I have staff bring that up. You know, some years are way up there, some of them are way down. We just try and take an average of it. That's how we come up with that part-time number.
I would say unless you have a really bad winter, where you use those guys a lot, I think that they can live within what's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have kind of the same crew that we use up year after year? I mean, they're, they're...
Well, same number for snow removal he does, but...
Yeah, yeah.
And even the summer help, I mean, we have this number that, you know, whether it's six or seven or eight people, we know, and we usually can, most of the time, we can fill it. We've had some problems some years, so...
Yeah.
Any other questions on road and bridge?
So just the part-time for the summer help. I mean, I might be pushing to eliminate summer help. Be pushing to hire mowing out for all county buildings and all county properties. Because you look, we look at this number every year, and it's like nineteen or twenty thousand dollars. But what we don't look at is all the money that we spend on the mowers that we repair, and now we got a mower that's a piece of junk, and you're gonna need to buy it, and it's gonna...
That's only two kids, so that, and part-time. The rest of the time, those guys are used out by the crews. They're actually on construction crews. We have one or two we put with our concrete crew, usually one with our asphalt crew. These kids help us with the flagging, where we can have our people actually doing work instead of standing out there. So I would hate to see the part-time removed completely. Two kids, yes, pretty well are put out in parks, time they start, time they finish. But the remainder of them are helping us with other jobs, and I still think they're important for us, Chris. I understand what you're saying about mowing. I don't disagree.
Well, we don't, we don't ever take into account, the repairs go in another line item for mowers.
Yeah.
And so, you know, all the equipment costs and everything else, and we got, probably gonna want a new mower, and that's probably gonna be forty or fifty grand for a mower. And we got Greg Camp mowing, taking up his time mowing these other ones. We hire out the health department building. We're already paying someone else to mow that, and it's just, I mean, why should we have mowers for Greg and mowers for Parks? And, you know, it just, it don't make any sense.
We didn't put one in this year, but speaking of that, you will need one next year.
Yeah, you better put that on your list, sir. So...
Okay, so format this year of budget was kind of, we gave a little more time for each department, so if you guys have questions for them, or if you want to go through some of their requests, then kind of, yes, I want to put that back in, no, I don't, we'll make those changes as we go. It's not saying that eventually, if we need to cut them back out, we can't, but that would kind of speed the process along if we get all of your questions answered while they're here and kind of take, so...
No, Jeff's, Jeff's raising his hand.
So you got one, so it's just one of them that stood out, the paint and beach line.
So they did not buy paint this year due to issues with the testing?
Yeah, that's right.
So next year, they're going to have to buy additional to get caught back up?
We only did half the road this year that we was gonna do.
So Chris, on the utilities, I'll show you. I brought up a spreadsheet. We go through and plug in each of those utilities by what they are and estimate out where we think they're gonna be. So we take six months of electric bills. Trash and stuff, we kind of do a little differently, because usually they change in the middle of the year on their fiscal year. So we include like a two or a three percent increase in the middle of the year just because of that. Electric kind of flows up and down, so we take that six months, and then we double it to kind of get summer and winter pieces together. Again, a bad winter can change that electric bill.
Well, and to be honest, we're not as concerned about it as we used to be, just because previous commissions said that's your budget number, you're sticking to it. In our business, it just doesn't work that way, so that's... You know, we had expenses this year for flooding. We had expenses for tornado. We had expenses. Hopefully, winter this budget is not gonna be bad. We'll see after first year, so...
Yep, seen that enough times where it's one year it's gonna be way under, one year it's gonna be way over.
But it's, it's kind of...
It's a plan.
It's in our, it's kind of a floating contingency. In the past, we've always estimated high on these budget numbers because we knew we couldn't come back and change it. So it was contingency built into the line items, but now, since we're basically increased our contingency because we're taking it out of these line items and showing them at the end, so...
Well, I guess in utilities and things like that, where you really have no control over, I mean, unless you're leaving the doors open in the middle of the winter and trying to heat outside, I don't think you have a lot of control over what those costs are. I think it's understandable that if, if that cost would increase, you would need to come back and ask for additional funds. And I think kind of the same idea with the alarms. If something goes wrong with it, obviously, we didn't plan for that to happen. It's an unexpected cost. I think if you were going into the budget and under-budgeting something that you knew was gonna happen, that would be a different story, but...
Are you listening?
I think your main concern was more repairs, right, the twenty thousand, so...
Yeah, the...
But I mean, we can go, you know, in June, if you're way over, we can...
So I think the reason I dropped repairs is because we increased...
Parts.
Oh, I dropped parts because we increased repairs so much. We were doing so much more in-house. I think the original budget on repairs, we started out the year at two fifty, and we went to three... I think the original budget on repairs, we started out the year at two fifty and we went to three oh four. Next year we're budgeting that three from the get-go, so I dropped the repairs end of it because we weren't getting to that sixty thousand dollar mark. Now, obviously, you've had some larger repairs in probably October. Cause my projected number is under where your current activity is. But you're still only at thirty thousand with a month to go, so you have ten thousand in there. Actually, you have more than that this year.
What was the bigger part that we had this year? Was it a pilot engine or transmission or something?
The undercarriage?
Undercarriage on the pilot.
It was ten thousand.
Yeah, ten thousand.
Transmission on a tractor.
Tractor transmission.
So see, that one just came in October, so it wasn't included in my projected number.
And we had a grader transmission, a couple of trucks, but they fixed, while they're working on, they did the trucks in-house, now they're working on the grader, but.
I don't think I have any more questions on that. Your witness?
I, I agree with your prefers, back to what they asked for.
You guys?
Yeah, I-
They don't, they don't use it if they don't, you know, they don't need it.
I had really decided, I, I don't, I just kind of had to note about it.
Well, like I said, we can put changes in and come back and talk about them again later. But I wanted to get all the questions out while they're here, cause sometimes there's things that they can answer that I cannot. So we can put them in and, and take them back out later, but. Any of the utilities or the equipment service contract that you wanted to change or the part-time?
I'm up in the area and I'm part-time. I wanna get done with it and I wanna take a look at, take care of our current employees first.
Okay, so-
And then if we have, I mean, it's a minimal amount for the time, but I just, I wanna start at ground zero.
Right.
And if we're missing twenty thousand, we can look at, okay, which is gonna be more to the two dollars per hour for the part-time or twenty thousand on the repairs.
Well, and if you look-
And part-timers do have to take care of the existing employees, so get some rest.
You know, and if you look, Jeff, we are carrying two point five under the budget officers' plan. We're carrying two point five million dollar contingency, so. Our funds, it's, you know, we have to keep within, with Road and Bridge out of that fund. So we're, we're still balancing, you know, and we're still carrying a good contingency.
Yep.
I remember when I first started, our contingency was less than a million dollars, so. We've been able to increase that over time, just because of the-
I'm fine with building that up because you're going to one other shop, you're going to want to add some wash made and then we'll be able to do that stuff. I mean, that's, I'm the same way at home. I don't get stuff right now, but in the future I'll be able to buy that when I want it. And I think y'all gotta, you're doing good with your money.
And the plan is to leave all the salary stuff to the end, but do you guys have any questions about equipment operators moving or possibly leaving that office position in there? Do you guys wanna?
The maintenance operator, operator one, we talked about that when we did the salary grid.
Yeah.
And I was, I was fine with that then. I think that makes perfect sense and I think it helps us retain some of our employees that way.
And that one is included in my numbers. The other one is not.
I'll send you information on the three we'd like to see promoted, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm always stuck with, okay, you have this number of people that you can have. Maybe the wonder, I have to wait until a two opens up, but if there's some kind of circumstances, we can look at it individually, so.
That's what we're proposing, is you take a look at these three individuals. Jeff, what we'd like to do is, is to be able to retain people.
Absolutely.
Give them an opportunity to grow. You know, I don't see any of them going above a two on equipment operator unless they're real good. We've had, we were fortunate enough to hire some people in the past where they were adapted. But we can ask you individually on those, and that's what we've done in the past, and it's what we continue to plan on coming to you with those, those ideas, so.
And if you guys will flip to page eighty-eight real quickly.
Yeah, that's where I was-
We're going backwards.
It's just their capital request broken down? We've listed them out so you can see what some of those are if you have any questions.
Yeah, the copier, just, I'll just go down the list real quick. The wide format copier, that's what we do, all the plan sheets on large printer. That's something that's used daily. The one we've got is probably seven or eight years old, Eric, you mentioned.
Probably eight years old, yeah.
Eight years old. And we, they've repaired it so many times, it needs to be replaced. You know, it, it's been breaking down on us, you know, probably at least once a quarter anymore, if not more often than that.
Probably every month or so.
Yeah. If you notice, a lot of the, under the computers, the batteries, those are the ones that we have in our backup. The UPS, we've been replacing some of those. We are proposing to get one new laptop and four computers. In the past, like I've told you all before, we normally buy our computers out of our budget. We've been able to get some to the capital improvements, but we try and keep our stuff up out there, out of our budget. You know, anything we can gain from capital improvements or sales tax, which is great, but we try and keep it in our budget. So there are some computers in there. Software, they list itself there. These are just the annual maintenance agreements and all the software. We've got for CAD for international engines. Mitchell is just kind of a catch-all for the Fords. Same way as Snap-on. Adobe is what we use on the webpage. AutoCAD is what Spencer uses for the surveying and then the sign software. As far as the equipment, you can see listed there, we're, we've got a new pickup proposed in there, a single axle dump truck. We'd like to put GPS on our sprayer that logs the time and date and location. We've had one incident at least where we had Atlanta complain that we had killed off some of his beans with our spraying. So this would just give us additional information and build it. The flex forms is for the concrete crew, that's for curb and gutters. Try and put those in. A cut-off saw, we need to replace one. We've got, we're looking for a snow blower out there at the office just to be able to clear, you know, sidewalks and stuff like that.
Snow blower or straw blower?
I have straw blower.
I'm sorry, straw. I was gonna say, I don't remember a snow blower. That's what I was looking at.
Can't they do both?
A new straw blower. The one we've had, it's been there since I've been there, so it's twenty-plus years.
Just a small bale straw blower?
Yeah. It just takes square bales, we feed them in and so. Walk-in striper, this is to do parking lot, parking positions like up there at the courthouse.
Is it a striper or is it a stripper?
Okay, cause I saw it too and I thought it maybe was just an ugly stripper.
Well, I didn't know if you were stripping the paint or if you were, I mean, so there, there is both.
Striping.
So there is both.
Six thousand, we might be able to get it for a good price.
It shouldn't be ugly for that price.
And again, we've got some chainsaw, what we're looking at-
Go on your next, Michael.
The chainsaw is basically, we're looking at replacing some as well as a large, large-
Larger saw for bigger trees.
We're having some where we've got a thirty inch or even a three-foot bar that's not reaching through them. So we're just looking at a bigger, um-
Chainsaw.
Yeah, bigger chainsaw. The pavement failed during milling and this is something we keep in there every year. We never know when we go out into, and mill someplace if it's gonna fall apart underneath of it. It just gives us some money to, uh-
Kill the income.
Yeah. Storm waters are normal storm water projects that we do. The big item that we're looking at this year is an equipment shed, basically along that back fence where we park at. What we're looking there is just putting up a pole barn to be able to cover the equipment to keep it hopefully from freezing up at night. That's along that back fence back there next to the, uh-
Creek.
Yeah.
And that's just to keep, like you said, keep the, keep the weather off the spreaders and stuff too while, while they're parked.
Cause we're parking a lot of equipment outside now. This just, we, it allows to be able to leave it on the trucks. Where now, if we go home at night and the truck's not gonna be used by the relief crew, we've gotta go up and unload or dug or, why is it freeze down? So we're just looking at where we can keep it underneath the overhang, so. And then we also, we haven't cleaned that oil thing. We need to do that. Is that the one down below you're talking about or the one up above?
The one up above.
That's the one we have electric on up there that we can heat. Just, we haven't cleaned it out for several years. It's getting a lot of, it's like a hot, hot water heater. You don't get in and clean it out, it builds up over time.
Spreader stands in there?
Hot water heater.
They're in the sales tax.
Oh, they're, oh, okay.
So.
Pickup truck is about what, an F, like a F-two-fifty, twenty-five-hundred? What are we talking about there?
Yeah, we're getting, we're going with three-quarter tons now.
Correct.
Except for modern cars.
So then when they get shipped down that they're, you know, they can be used by the crews too.
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
No. Come up, hey Eric, that wide format printer scanner, I had an architect on the third floor and he went to work for the state. He left one upstairs cause it's just too damn big to move. He'll give it away. Come take a look and see.
Honestly, Sam, if they get any kind of outdated, they're not usable. We actually have one in our office that we need to get rid of.
Sounds like IP Jack.
Yeah, but I'll, I can stop by.
Yeah, I just, I just-
We've got, well, what we find is one of the, you never know what the usage is on them, Sam. And the other thing is like I said, just a software update on them.
Yeah.
This one that we've got here, it's a printer, but it's also a scanner. When we get Platts in, we scan those in. We put them into a database where we can pull it up through GIS. So it's, that's a pretty important piece of equipment that we use daily.
Well, I got one upstairs.
Furniture, what was furniture? Kind of skipped over that. Two thousand dollars for furniture.
Oh, okay.
That's just replace desk chairs and stuff as we need.
Well, and we're gonna buy, we need to buy some new chairs in our-
Copper room.
Back, the back room where we meet at.
Card table?
No, we got enough tables.
We got enough tables.
We don't need no card tables.
Yeah, we-
Well, what's a card table?
Okay, when we go to planning?
Yeah.
Page fifty-
Not done yet?
Fifty-four if you're in the book.
We checked out.
Speed up. We're getting behind schedule.
You were trying to start with.
Yeah.
Oh, that's no reason we can't catch you.
Page fifty-four if you're in the book.
Okay.
Fifty-four in a good book.
The only thing in planning is the postage. We'd like to see that. We smote five hundred, we'd like to see that. We're currently at three forty-three. We carried over balance and not covered under two thousand and eighteen, so. We'd just like to see that raised back. The rest of it's okay. You know, the vehicle, the vehicles there, I think we can get another year out. Just FYI, at some point, we're gonna have to look at replacing the three pickups that the guys use back here. We have a mark and patent, the building code inspectors, as well as the truck buyer, Shannon Cleethemers. We need, next year we're probably gonna have to include that to replace those. They're getting a hundred thousand, close or above, so. But other than that, planning's good.
Questions or things?
Hmm.
So parks would be page eighty-six.
So question on planning real quick. So obviously we're just tracking actual expenses and planning. I mean, it's obviously losing money. Where does that, where does that loss come from?
General fund.
Correct.
That's all out GR. Planning's all out GR.
Page eighty-six, it's parks.
As usual, we've, the only thing, you know, we've got, we asked for additional funds again in personnel services reimbursement. You know, I'm not sure where we're sitting on that this year. I don't know if we've got any final numbers on parks. What we spent?
I don't think so.
That's the only thing, but that comes out of GR, so. Grass cutting, back to Chris's original statement, so. Other than that, no changes.
What page was that, Kirsten?
Uh, eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Yep. So currently we pay two fellow works for that part-time, eighteen thousand dollars. They asked that it be increased to twenty.
If he's gonna bid out mowing, he probably won't need to.
Yeah, if he bid out.
So that twenty-nine or twenty-eight thousand dollars comes out of GR too?
Yes.
Yes.
General revenue's pretty generous.
Do what?
Said general revenue's pretty generous. We give money to everybody, not just you guys.
Okay, so sales tax is the last one on the list. Their sales tax starts on page one twelve.
Eric? I can go through the different projects we have proposed really quick. I'll just kinda go through my list here. Before projects, we do have the equipment replacement in there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but we have a backhoe, shop truck and spreader stands?
Listen, we can go, just wait and keep that to the end.
Okay. I'm just going in line with the, the numbers, but project-wise, we have a reimbursement on the Dunkland Street project with the city, the corporate project. That's the only project that we're, we're doing next year with them and it's a reimbursement. We do have some reserve funding there to help us when we go into the next year budget, which will, I think, leave a couple of projects left to do. Clark Avenue project and then some MSP redevelopment area projects. Under the bridge line item, we have a stormwater project on Brookview and Gateway. We have a placeholder for some miscellaneous stormwater, um, bridge type work, either design or construction of two hundred thousand and then bridge maintenance of twenty-five thousand. We have two BRO projects ongoing right now. And that's, there's a reimbursement from the state, or actually from the feds through MoDOT in Old Forge Road and High Point Road. Those are two projects we have in design right now that we're working on that we'll bid next year, take those to construction. Row construction, Water Ford Road and Mount Hope Road, that's a carryover from this year's budget. We could not get right of way this year. We will pursue that and should have that ready to go for next year. Also, we would like to begin design on Lesch Road. That's the second of the gravel road upgrade projects that we have in the current, current sales tax cycle. And that would be designed next year with construction the following year. Major thoroughfares, we would have liked to take Business Fifty West Phase Two improvements to construction this year, but we did not have enough money available in our budget due to other, other items. And so we have a reserve for construction to help us budget-wise with cash flow getting into next year. And so that's at a million dollars that we'll set aside this year to help us as we go into next year's budget. And so that's at a million dollars that we'll set aside this year to help us as we go into next year's budget.
Do you have a, I'm sorry to stop you, but do you have a separate sheet? Because I'm looking at the budget and I'm lost.
I do.
They're listed separately on there as well. He's running.
Well, I get that, but where, where he's at and where this is, they don't match at all. I mean, maybe that's just me. I don't know if you guys were following at all, but.
I'm trying.
I got, I got.
He's going down the list in order, but you gotta start in the expenses. You can't start in the revenue.
Okay, I'm still lost, so anyway.
I don't have.
I was following somewhat. I, I mean, I think that might be a whole separate thing I was gonna do. It's another thing on projects. I wouldn't mind having one of those either, because I got some questions on.
I was, I, I do have a separate sheet that I, that I go off.
But I don't wanna get that deep into it today about which projects are on each side, which Tanner Bridge Road projects in the accident. I think that's a whole nother similar project.
This budget will change probably the most out of any of them because, um, I budgeted a little different when I sent it to you. I take any open projects that he has that have not been completed yet and include them. So if they pay down some of those projects between when I submit the budget to you and the end of the year, those numbers will change and some of them could be significant. But the cash is also where it was at that point in time. So, um, this budget will probably change the most out of any budget. So it may be better to have Eric come back, um, next week or something and go more in depth and we update where we're at at that time.
One, one good thing to do is come back after we've gone through the last pay cycle in which we've closed out some of these jobs that show up on this list here. And there's several that'll show up, um, because they're ongoing, that will go off of as we go into next year. Will go off the list. I can go through here. We got cooperative projects. We do have a reserve in there as well. Rail spur extension, I expect to close that out by the end of the year. High, East High Streets, that'll be a payment to the city this year. That will go off. Uh, High School Road as well. Dunkland Street will stay on going into next year. Um, the crossroads, South Town Rustic and Meadow Brook, those will go off. Actually, they're already off of our, um, budget now. Those are, those are completed. Sleepy Hollow Estates as well, that's completed. South Brooks Phase Two, that, they're, um, that's down there a little bit. Um, Phase Three is a design project that's in this current year's budget. We just did the agreement with Bartlett West on that. That'll carry forward into next year. I mentioned Brookview and Gateway, Fair Lawn Court and Woodway. Um, that would, we would close the design out on that. That's done. Uh, Montauk Creek Road Bridge Removal, that had to be pushed into next year due to, um, water elevation level, water levels on, on the creek there. That's a backup to the Missouri River. Rainbow Drive, uh, that would go off of this list. That is complete as of last year, actually. Uh, Villages, um, getting back to kinda looking at my list here, under Villages, we do have the, the cooperative projects that we're doing with them. And there's four hundred thousand that will add to what we had in last year's, or this current year's budget as well.
That's in a different line, Eric. The hundred and forty that's in there is their normal.
Okay, the one forty, okay, yeah, yeah. Also, we, we have the hundred and forty thousand, which is the normal amount we budget each year uh, for the one hundred thousand that each of the seven communities gets every year. And, um, the two thousand eighteen overlay, that's, that's off. Resurfacing, we do. We still have an open contract right now that will, we would expect to close out by the end of the year, but we're still working on finishing it, so it could have to push into next year, just to carry, carry forward into next year. All those others are done. Um, safety improvements. I would expect that we'd be able to close out Tanner Bridge Project, uh, this year, which is complete. It could carry forward into the next year as far as doing the final closeout and then.
Do another phase of Tanner Bridge?
I would call it Phase Five or Section Five of Tanner Bridge. That's on the other side of Grand Island subdivision intersection that I would like to build next year. And.
That's not in the budget here though?
Pardon?
I don't see that listed in the budget.
It's included in that Tanner Bridge Road Safety, which is not broken out into a separate project. So the five forty-nine, four twenty-nine.
Which one is that Eric, that you wanted to do?
Um, section, it's Section Five, which is the very last one, the curve, the bad curve.
Well, the low hanging fruits too, that's easier.
Yeah, south of Grand Island, yes.
I didn't know which one was wrong there.
So that's included. I thought, I thought the contract with Don Sneeters was like four hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
It's four sixteen, so he has a hundred and twenty thousand in there for Section Five.
Yes.
That'll do design and construction?
I think we're, I estimate a little high, just to be on the safe side, not knowing what we'd get into. Um, I think it, we can be done for a lot less than that.
Okay. So that'd be Tanner Bridge Road Safety One, number one and number five then?
Yeah.
Right. We'll probably break it out into a separate project when he actually signs that first contract. We just haven't done it in the budget yet.
We do, um, just, just to follow up to, I did, I did mention, um, some miscellaneous stormwater repair at a, at a, an amount of two hundred thousand. That is, um, a line item that we use as needed. A lot of times when, when our, when we do our overlays, we're, we're planning for those going into the next year. Um, we get into situations on some of our streets that we need to do some minimal stormwater work before we do an overlay. And that's, that's the line item. We like to take that funding out of to, to cover the cost for that. And then other, um, just small little design projects. Some we do in-house, some we, we, um, consult out. That would be small projects that we can do. Sometimes we can build them in-house or contract them out.
So you said, you said something about, uh, Business Fifty, uh, but yet I still can't find that anywhere in the budget, so anyway.
Business Fifty.
There it is, Phase Two, okay. Alright, so you got a million dollars for, is that design and construction there?
There's a, a million dollars as a construction reserve. We have, it looks like the additional would be what we currently would carry forward for the current design project that's ongoing with Central Reserve Professional Services. A portion of that's been spent. Um, the original contract on that was just over a hundred and fifty thousand.
Um, so you talked about, um, Waterford a little bit. That's obviously a gravel road upgrade.
Yes.
Mount Hope Road Improvements, what, what is that?
It's the same project. Um, we split them out, just to track them, track each road on expenses we spend on each road. It's the same project. It's a continuous project.
And then Les Road, is that construction or is that design?
That's design.
Okay. That's to take, uh, from Zion to the bridge?
To the bridge.
Try to straighten it a little bit and.
Straighten it a little bit, then it'd be pavement all the way through, from pavement to pavement.
Okay. It'll be design and acquisition right of way and whatever needs to happen to get that project done.
Yeah, we would, in theory, if things go as planned, it would be design and we'd begin right of way acquisition next year and have it ready to go early following war for construction.
Okay, for capital, uh, purchases during that end of sales tax, we have a hundred and forty thousand set aside each year. What we're proposing next year is to replace another one of our backhoes, uh, to replace our shop truck, and then to get, uh, spreader stands. Uh, this is something we've talked to, uh, is it them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, the positive plan program when we do these, uh, for insurance, this gets the guys off having to climb up on the top of the stands that we currently lift those spreaders off the trucks, um, you know, that's an accident. We have a couple of guys got her up there slipping and falling, uh, while we're trying to take these, uh, spreaders on or off. There's ice on them, steel beams and stuff, so the spreader stands basically pull, as you pull it out, the stand flips down. We've got, they came on this new truck, we got, didn't have it on her.
But we're getting.
We're getting one. We can show you what we're talking about, but that's what we're looking at. That's what MoDOT's been going to, uh, a lot of public work is get away from those old equipment storage. Uh, you can see that up above our shop where we hang all the spreaders up there. This is an individual stand with, uh, spreaders as they come off the truck. But that's what we're closing in capital.
That's some type of a winch or something that just picks them up out of the truck or what?
They hooked to the spreader and when you slide it out, it, the legs come down along.
Yeah, I think what he's asking, you have to hook to something to pull them out.
Should this rig the bed?
No. So you can back right underneath them and just pick them up a little bit with the bed?
Our new truck that we just got in, um, this was back today. Yesterday, uh, is supposed to have one on it. When we get that installed, we want to come out and take a look at it, um.
After you unload it a couple of times and the legs are all broken.
Well, that's what, we're not only taking the spreader stands down quite quickly, let's hurt that way, but I have to say. Any questions? That's sales tax.
Thank you.
Nope.
Don't want to catch you back, but we didn't.
No, we didn't. Mike, Mike, we'll do this in ten minutes, right?
One thing, one thing we, on the capital, uh, is the parks, um, I don't know, I thought we had submitted something on there.
I don't have anything for parks, but, um, that's what's left. Yeah, so there's fifty-two thousand left in the five-year sales tax.
We're meeting with Parks Committee again. They had brought up the possibility of paving the lot out there in County Park, where we have the pavilion and, um, the.
Swing set.
Handicap fishing, handicap fishing access, is paving that park and lot right in there. And some, you know, working out either this year or next year, we're trying to, try and move forward with.
Who was it? Somebody was talking about putting a helicopter pad out there too. Did they talk to you?
They did. I never heard no more about it.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Put it up there on that road.
Yeah.
That goes to the ball field.
Yeah. Yeah, for emergencies. Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't know if anybody'd say more about it.
So before they leave, there's two items that are on Greg's list for your building. So the HVAC replacement and replacement of the garage doors and doors. I don't know if you guys have questions about that or anything from them?
HVAC is the office, or?
Yeah, that's, we still have the original HVAC that, that building built with, uh, that might have eighty-four, eighty-six.
Probably eighty-four.
We're having issues with it. It's, Greg thinks he can drop our utilities or expenses down quite a bit by going to some, uh, heat pumps in that building, so.
Um, the garage doors.
That's on the other building across the way.
Paint shop?
Yeah, the paint, that's where we go in now. We did some structural repairs to it probably five years ago, six years ago. And put a new roof on it. Um, we still need to get the garage doors on. We've replaced, out of our budget, we replaced all the garage doors on the back of, uh, the main building. That was done three years ago. Two or three years ago. Thank you. I was gonna bring that up, but I got it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you gotta choose, we'd rather have the HVAC.
Yeah. Yeah, eighty-four actually.
Mailboxes are gonna be, they got their single mailbox on Tarrant Road, right? And ones that are still, the old ones on Tanner Bridge. Have they been removed yet or they're going to remove?
They're going to be, yeah. That was, that was a deal just between the post office and the property owners. We just were able to.
Did you get your grease trap fixed, Michael?
I should make sure there, I assume, because when I drove up there, I saw that other single box and the other one's in a terrible spot now.
Time, time wise, it just worked out. Sneeters was able to put it in for them, so.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, it worked out good.
That's the plan though. It's, yeah. And Sneeters, they know we job on that. Fish it quick, done.
It was a good one.
Yes, sir. Good job. Get out of there.
Yeah.
Run.
We're running.
Alright.
So, page seventy-two.
Okay, um, as for the full-time, that looks real good, no issues. Um, I don't know, I, on the revenue side, there's only one area that I'm asking for a, a new line on the revenue side, and that would be, um, I will be invoicing the school district for two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for wifi increase. So that would be about twenty-seven hundred dollars that they will be reimbursing, uh, us for wifi service for the school, uh, program. So I just need a, a new line in there for, uh, uh, wifi or.
How much are they paying month?
Uh, two hundred and twenty-five. Be twenty, monthly, it's twenty-seven hundred for the year.
Twenty-seven hundred?
And that is increasing our wifi, uh, from nothing to, uh, seven gigs. So, uh, our system won't be falling down all the time on the laptops that we have.
So they're paying for that portion?
Yes, they are.
And how much did it increase our, by going?
Two twenty-five. Increased it by two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. That's why, that's why they're paying for it.
But we need, do we need to add that to the expense side?
To the expense side, yes. Revenue and then on the expense. But it's, it's gonna be a war, uh, we will, it'll be a wash because of the money that we'll be getting from the school district. Now, and the expense side, um, part-time, um, line. Uh, I have five part-time FTEs. That is, um, twenty-four hours a week times five at fifty-two weeks. I've got enough money in there in order to, um, look at a small increase per hour in order to, uh, maintain, uh, my part-time staff. Uh, I've not increased that, uh, in, I've not increased that, I cannot remember when. I can't, put it this way, I've got three positions, open positions right now. Because we are down in staff, I've covered, uh, last month, I think I covered a hundred and twenty hours of, uh, time at that center. I've had other staff cover time because I can't find staff. And so, um, I'm going to be, uh, putting up a, um, a request for, um, salary adjustment. It'd be about a buck and a half per hour. But it will stay, I will stay within my allocated budget line. I'm not asking for an increase in that line, but I'll stay within that budget line in order to, I mean, to increase that over the five.
Yeah, when I see those pay forms come through of what you're paying, I'm, I'm like, how do you find anybody?
Yeah, it's, it's tough. It is, it is real tough. Um.
What's the current rate?
Current, eleven dollars an hour.
And you're wanting to go to twelve fifty?
Twelve fifty. Uh, still not a lot. But if I can, but that's living within my budget though too. Uh, next year, I'll be coming back and talking about some other areas in order to, uh, maintain quality staff. An area that, um, I have not talked to Kristen about, and, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna be a surprise to her at this time. When it comes to contractual services, uh, that is professional services. That's just right be. When it comes to contractual services, uh, that is professional services. It's just right below the, um, personnel. I, I do have an appropriations transfer for this year in order to, um, try to finish out this year. But at this point, we have a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars allocated for that line item. That is to pay for attorney's fees for, um, when we go to court. I am, I have depleted that line, uh, for this year. And one of the reasons for the depletion of that line is that we are getting more neglect and abuse cases referred to our court. As we get more neglect and abuse cases, that means longer court activity. And we have to see them every ninety days. Typically at the beginning of a neglect and abuse case, uh, you have a PC hearing, you have a seventy-two-hour hearing, and you have a PC hearing, all within a matter of, uh, two to three weeks. Then after that, we are coming back every ninety days. Uh, we're also having, uh, family team meetings where they're trying to work with the family, seeing how they're progressing. And that is just costing a little bit more money. So I am requesting, in addition to, um, the increase that we had from one-twenty-one to one-thirty-six, I'm asking that we, uh, increase it to the one-fifty, one-two-fifty that I requested for this coming year, but keeping the rate at the forty-five, not increasing it from there.
So just a little background, we were paying forty dollars an hour, or we currently are. The estimate was three thousand twenty-five hours a year. So we had talked earlier about the possibility of going to forty-five dollars an hour. The forty-five dollars an hour at the three thousand twenty-five hours per year is the one-thirty-six, one-two-five that I mentioned in the budget. So what I'm taking away from this is that the total number of hours per year is increasing. So he wants to leave the, the dollar per hour at forty-five, but we need to increase some additional hours during the year for those cases.
Yes. I'll be, uh, asking for an appropriations transfer of six thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, from various accounts to this account right here.
For twenty-nineteen?
For twenty-nineteen, and that is paying for first come, first served. Those that come in after the, uh, it'll be carried over to next year at this point unless I can, look for an appropriations supplemental to come in to take us out for the rest of the year, which would be approximately, uh, an additional, uh, five thousand on top of this.
You see that trend?
Right now.
Does it keep going or do you think it's gonna?
I, it may plateau, it may plateau at, for the, this year over the next couple of years. Uh, it's, it's just reversing at this point. We are getting a lot more, um, cases when it comes to substance abuse, uh, issues coming in. Uh, we, we're getting a lot of abandonment issues coming in, so, uh, it is, it is increasing. One of the things that we're doing that is, we're, we're gonna be the first in the state is that instead of removing a kid, uh, because the, uh, parents have been, uh, using, we are going to maintain that child in the home, but have daily contact with them, have more involvement, uh, with, uh, with our CASAs, with our, um, uh, children's division, and, uh, with our juvenile court personnel overseeing them on a daily basis. That can keep down the cost when it comes to, um, attorney's fees, but it will have ongoing paid personnel. Another area that, um, I was involved, that, um, Jeff Hosher, Commissioner Hosher got, came to me about a month ago. Callaway, uh, Callaway Cove and Monitog, um, four-H. They're wanting to, uh, put a half-time personnel in Cove County to work with our at-risk youth. I am going to go up to Green County with them next month to take a look at what activities they're doing up there. It's been somewhat successful with their part-time staff. They will actually pay for this position, so it's nothing.
Shouldn't be any cost at all to us.
It should not be any cost to us, but it can work with, uh, some of our at-risk youth, which, uh, uh, they would have, uh, programming, uh, that we could actually take a look and see what's effective and not effective. And that's why I want to go to Green County and see what's going on there, because they've been there for about the last year, so.
Yeah, Cove County Extension did have a, a part-timer that she found something different. So instead of filling that position, they felt like they could cover the stuff and they had this program they wanted to look into.
Right, yeah, I thought it was great.
Yeah.
So, yeah, hopefully it works out.
I'm taking my.
Maybe you need some from us on that one.
Right, and, and go down there. So that is one area I did not talk to Kristen about. Um, and I, and it's just, uh, it, it's something that is needed at this point. Uh, the other areas that, uh, we looked at within the budget, um, I have no issues with, uh, we can live with, so, on the expense side.
So while Michael was talking, I added in the twenty-seven hundred dollars on both sides. Um, there's now a contract reimbursement line.
And the only other area that we have, and that is in, uh, capital improvements. And I talked to, uh, you guys mid-year about, uh, iPads, and that is in the amount of, um, four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. And we said that we would take a look at that in the, uh, for capital improvements for this coming year.
So it's listed on page twenty-eight where we were looking for.
This will, uh, keep down overtime, um, comp time for my DJOs when we have, uh, calls coming in in the evenings. They can actually do the work from home instead of coming in. We can actually, uh, e-file our forms to the judge, so that he can sign protective custody orders instead of us coming into the office, having to fill out the forms and then, uh, max it to him. So, uh, this will cut down on a lot of the travel time and, uh, comp time, having that for forty, forty-nine hundred dollars. That would be for eight, eight iPads for the deputy juvenile officers. And that will also, that will be Wi-Fi, so I'm not looking at a, um, internet cost, so it'd be all Wi-Fi. And so it wouldn't cost us anything. And that would come with our car case and any other hardware that we have and programs in order to be, uh, uh, compatible to, uh, the state court's administrative's office. If you would indulge me for just five minutes. In twenty, in January, January one of twenty-twenty-one, uh, the age majority will be going to age eighteen. And that was set out in legislation two years ago, saying if appropriation, appropriation was awarded, it would go up. It was identified that it would cost approximately ten million dollars in order to implement that, uh, that piece of legislation. So it was put in advance until that could actually be, uh, looked at and collected. Then, uh, the federal government, and I brought this to your attention last year, the federal government, um, and, uh, told all states, come December eighteenth of twenty-twenty-one, any kit that we certify must be maintained in juvenile court until they actually complete their court hearing. What that means is that if we certify an individual to be, uh, to stand in general court, until they actually go through the adult process, the completion of that court, we must maintain them in juvenile court. We cannot do that at this time in our facility. So, and I mentioned it, um, about six, seven months ago, i- if that, when that does happen, it's gonna cost the county approximately twenty-six thousand dollars a year to contract out either at Boone County or Camden County, because they have a much larger detention facility, so that, uh, they would have recreational and other activities while they are there, because it's gonna be anywhere from twelve to eighteen months, typically, when a person is certified until they actually, uh, complete their court case. But that is not until December eighteenth of twenty-twenty-one. I'm just wanting to facilitate that out, so, uh, that'll be two years from this month.
So talking with HUD, when they were talking, the group that helped rebuild Joplin, or is rebuilding Joplin, areas that were in the tornado area can get HUD money. Could we put an addition?
If, if we want to mess with our detention facility, it would run us anywhere from one-point-five to two million dollars to come into compliance with the standards. Right now, we, uh, have, we're grandfathered in.
Okay.
Uh, so that we do not have to touch our facility. But if we touch that facility, it's gonna cost us anywhere from, uh, one-point-five to two million dollars.
Not count any addition?
No, that would, that would bring us up, that would bring us up to standards where we, it would, it would increase the square footage of that facility in order for us to maintain something of that nature. I'm saying twenty-six thousand a year versus two million.
Yeah.
And 'cause I'm saying how often are we gonna have, uh, individuals that we're gonna certify? I, and I've been here thirteen years, and in thirteen years in total, we've had about seven certified cases. Within the last several years, we've had three. Uh, we've got one coming up, uh, within the next sixty days.
So if you certify a juvenile and they live inside the city of Jefferson.
Cove County.
I'm not, I'm not talking that. If they live inside the city of Jefferson, isn't it their responsibility to help pay for those costs?
I can't answer that. Maybe someone could explore.
It's fine. I mean, I get it. I mean, they're a Cove County resident, but at the same time, you know, probably the bulk of the, the kids that come to your facility are probably from inside the city limits of Jefferson.
No.
No?
No. They come right on the outskirts.
But?
But the crime is, is committed inside the city.
Right. I'm just wondering if it's a municipal charge or if it's a?
State charge.
It's a state charge.
It would be, it would be a state charge at that point, yes.
So if they get certified and they go to the jail?
Right now.
Okay, so then if they get convicted and do some time and, uh,
They go to state.
To the state pen, then we should get reimbursed for the time getting certified too? I'm sure the state's got that figured out.
Yeah, right.
Okay, sorry, I said.
Good, but I'm just, I'm just saying, two years from now.
Yeah, I know. I see exactly what you're saying.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just wanting you to be aware of that, uh, coming in. Again, I am out of money right now to pay for any new attorney's, uh, bills until, uh, in the amount of sixty-eight hundred dollars. That's what I have. I'm asking, um, we're in appropriations transfer.
That's what you have right now?
Right now.
There could be additional ones between now and the end of the year.
Oh, yes, I, I know that, that there's gonna be, uh, for the, uh, month of, uh, uh, November. Uh, the ones that come in December are always gonna go into January because they come at the end of the month. But with the increase, I know I'm looking at an additional five thousand dollars on top of what I'm asking for transfer right now. Now, my question to the commission is at this point, and I know that I, I have money in the existing, in my existing account. And I'm asking at this point if the commission would consider a one-time transfer of approximately fifty-seven hundred dollars to six thousand, and that would be transferring dollars from my full-time dollar, uh, salary line to the contractual line, because I've had open positions in there that I will not spend down. So I would not have to come somewhere else with them.
I'll find it this year.
Yeah.
It's not gonna.
No, this year, no, right, for this year it helps that problem, but for next year, I'm asking that we, uh, that, uh, the commission, fund the appropriation of one-fifty, one-two-fifty.
So I wouldn't suggest moving from a salary line, I would say from contingency if you, and I would, I would say that we keep up to date as far as we can through the end of the year if we have to move any purposes to do that.
So that it doesn't look like we have that much in salaries, actual?
Right, I wouldn't mess with the history and the salary line by moving money out of there. We take an hard stance on not moving money unless we're moving between salary lines at the end of the year to pay for benefits or something that went over, so.
It's all coming from general fund.
Yes, yes, it is.
If that's easier, I'll find with either way.
Okay.
As far, so you're looking at foregoing the five-dollar raise for the, the attorneys?
No.
No, no.
He's not in there, right? He's saying they're gonna work additional hours.
So you're gonna add the hours and add the five dollars per hour?
Right, uh-huh.
In your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So this new legislation that went into effect, where's the revenue gonna come from to make up for the change in the law?
You're talking about now the age and the, oh, no, it's, it's a unfunded mandate. No, that, no, the second one came from the fed, federal government.
So I would say that you just don't follow the law?
Well, I would have been retired by then. That'd be a long person.
If you change the law and no money comes with it, then the law, law's invalid.
That's an unfunded mandate.
Right.
Right, and as for the age of majority, they were delaying that until they actually had the dollars to come in to, uh, give to the courts in order to implement that law, that piece of legislation. But the other one is not from the state, but it's from the feds. So, um, and that was, uh, last year's Congress, uh, came down in June of last year, of this past year, identifying that as being an issue. But I'm just saying, two years from this month, we're gonna be faced with that.
Merry Christmas.
I'm just trying to get us prepared for that as we go down this road.
All right, what else we got to figure out?
That is it.
Grease trap.
I have something, uh, so included in my budget, there were, um, three actual titles that I'm proposing that we change the starting salary to.
Yes.
And two of those are in Michael's department, so a youth specialist one and a youth specialist two. Um, I'm proposing that we increase those starting salaries by two thousand dollars. So he would have an additional sixteen thousand in his budget, um, to give two thousand dollars to the people that are currently in those positions.
And that's full-time?
Yes.
That's full-time positions?
Yes. Um, the other position is in maintenance, uh, but two of them are in Michael's. He did not include that in his budget request, but we did talk about it after the fact. And I do have, um, some job descriptions from the state and things that show what they're making compared to where we are. So I would consider this a market adjustment, um, for those positions. Um, the current starting salary is twenty-four-five and twenty-six-five for those two positions. And the twenty-six-five position, so the youth specialist two is within decree. So, um, something to think about, but it's included in my budget currently.
How many of those positions does he have?
Eight total.
Eight, thirty total.
Eight total.
So four, four of each, or?
It is one, two, four, I think it's four.
It is, four of four.
Four of four, right now.
So what are the part-time, full-time people, what are they, what are their time?
The part-time, they're still youth specialists, but they only get, uh, eleven dollars an hour. I don't care if you have a degree or not, if you're part-time.
Right, but you want to bring them up to twelve-fifty and or you want to adjust it to twelve-fifty, which would be more than what their current these specialists make.
No, it is not.
Obviously no benefits.
Right.
But I'm just.
If I look at the youth specialists right now and their salaries, they're running about thirteen-fifty an hour at the current rate that they have right now.
Twelve-fifty would be twenty-six thousand an hour, uh, here.
Yeah, it's just rounding, it's just low.
Right.
Twenty-four thousand.
But, but the part-time, but those, that part-time positions, uh, only, uh, we use them up to twenty-four hours a week. So that gives me three, uh, eight-hour shifts per week.
So the youth specialist one would go to twenty-six-five would be the starting salary, his part-timers would still be? His part-timers would still be at 12.50?
At 12.50, 26.
Yes.
With zero benefits.
But...
Correct.
But you can't really say 26, because they're only working 24 hours...
Correct.
A week. That's a... That's based on a 40-hour-a-week position.
Yeah, but somebody's looking at how much they get paid per hour, and how much somebody working part-time gets paid an hour. That's what they're looking at, is per hour. Doesn't matter on the yearly salary. So that's... I was just looking at where that was all at.
I got you.
So again...
I didn't have a problem with that. I was just looking at it.
Yeah.
Hyper, out loud.
We can leave that till the end and talk about what salaries, but that's currently in my budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't disagree with it. Wait and see at the end where we're at.
Any other questions?
You were talking about a maintenance. I've been talking to Greg about our maintenance. When I first came to juvenile court, we had a full-time position. And then over time, because it's always been in the maintenance area. And I know we've had two full-time people. Excellent jobs, they retired. Then we got a person who came in who wanted to only work part-time, so that position was cut down to a part-time. Now, with my part-time position that I have, I don't even have a part-time position. I may have a quarter-time position at this time because of the limitations that individual has, what they can and cannot do. What they do, I would be better off paying part-time youth specialists to come in and do the work, and probably do maybe a better job on what's happening within that area. And... But I've been talking to Greg about that, too. Sam, I'm coming to the commission for this coming year. Something's gotta change on what we're doing at this point.
So we moved a generator down there?
Yes, and it is working.
Yeah.
So it's been great.
So we have a... Do we have a maintenance agreement for that generator? Or do we have anything like that? And then also, what about?
So was it not the old contract?
At the health department?
Same generator, but just a few pounds.
I don't think we had a maintenance on it at the old health department.
And then we got fuel. We'll have fuel for that generator as well. Is it natural?
Yes.
We can find out about it.
Yeah, we got one out. We got a model, too, so they come out every year.
And he may just pay that to come look at it, or whatever. I don't remember paying any maintenance.
Just wanna make sure that we got those costs in there as well, so... I don't know what that cost to come out and look at it, but...
I may even know. We'll figure that out.
Okay, that's all I got.
Any other questions for Michael?
Need to fix this grease trap.
We're working on it.
Are they?
Yeah, they're working on it now.
I haven't really talked about that, but it's just not come out yet.
Okay, hadn't come in yet, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Twenty-five minutes behind.
Do you need a break?
No.
Sam's speaking for all of us.
Kristy, do you need a break?
If I need a break, I'm just gonna get and go.
Well, after you, I probably will.
I'll watch... I'll catch you when I watch it again later. Couple of drinks and watching these makes it more fun.
We should drink now.
Yeah, there you go. I got kind of a cough.
I can take care of that.
Yeah.
Dr. Bush, thank you.
Before we get started, I wanted to follow up on it...
We're already started.
On a email... Before we start on my budget, an email that I sent the other day about the T-DAP vaccines and HEPA that they're doing at the sheriff's department. The HEPA is actually free from the state, because you know there's that outbreak that's going on in the jail and homeless population, and we're trying to prevent our staff from... Anyway, but the T-DAP... Chris was the only one that answered the email about how to pay for those vaccines if you wanted us to run it through VaxCare, you know, bill insurance, or if you wanted to just pay for those. Did you see that?
So this was for the jail employees, right?
Right.
So anyway, I feel like it's something that we need to pay for, but, I mean, there's no point in us running it through our insurance, because they're just gonna charge us an enormous rate, and it comes back to us and we pay it. So my thought would be is, let them get the vaccines and just pay it out of the health insurance fund.
Next week's agenda, we're talking about.
Okay, well, they're giving them...
We gave them today.
Yeah, they're doing it today, and...
We're doing it Thursday.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep it in budget right now. I saw the email, and I saw Chris's reply. And I figured, well, it's gonna come up sometime, and we'll have more information, because what's it gonna cost us if we go through VaxCare? What's it gonna cost us if we put the bill ourselves?
It's $56 a dose. If we... VaxCare's gonna charge us $56 a dose. Today, we gave 18, so 56 times, you know?
What will they charge insurance for?
And insurance will be charged probably close to... VaxCare, because our third-party builder, will charge the insurance company probably close to $100 a dose.
And that comes right back to us through the third-party administrator.
I mean, I need the stuff in front of me. I mean, this is...
Well, we don't have their insurance information, because we didn't gather any of that today.
Space.
So we'd have to do some...
I mean, I understand.
And we have to check them out.
I wanna sit down and report them.
It's $56, but we're gonna get reimbursed $100?
No, we're not gonna reimburse.
No, we'll bill our insurance $100.
They're gonna charge... If we run it through them as an ins... To rent... To charge their insurance, they're gonna charge the insurance probably about $100 a dose. Now, I don't know what the insurance allows on it. I don't know. VaxCare's our third-party builder that we're using right now till December 31st, so...
What's the actual dose cost?
56. That's what they're charging us, it's gonna be 56.
That's what it costs you to buy it?
It's gonna cost us $56 to buy it.
I mean, if you pay it through the health insurance fund, it costs you 56 bucks. If you run it through our insurance, it costs us $100.
I bet that, probably.
So... And that comes right back to the health insurance fund, and they pay the $100. So you save $44 if you just pay it per dose. But anyway, we can talk about it later.
Well, we really can't talk about it later, because we have to run it... We have to check it out of VaxCare and everything else.
No, they're giving the vaccine, so...
I'm glad today's budget talks about problem up there, it's gonna be an hour. Because now I'm already... If it's simply $100 minus $56 for saving $44, that just doesn't seem like it's that simple.
That's exactly what happens. So I go to the doctor, and I get a vaccine or whatever. They charge the insurance company $150 or $200. I pay a $35 copay or whatever. Well, I pay $35. Well, this $150 comes back through a third-party administrator right to Debbie, and she pays the difference.
We're filling my health insurance for their stuff.
Your health insurance for their stuff, I don't follow. Employee... Our employee... Our employees on our health insurance.
It's jail staff that we're giving the vaccines to.
Oh, I thought it was prisoners?
No.
No.
It's jail staff.
No.
See, that's the thing. Y'all still don't sometimes...
Sorry. I'm just trying to get you confused.
We're just trying to know what to do with the vaccine that they gave. They gave the vaccine this morning and Friday.
Thursday.
On Thursday.
We're gonna be all day.
Yeah.
I might as well just...
Maybe already ordered one.
Y'all better get some Snickers coming, I'm gonna tell you.
I should've brought Snickers. Okay.
Bring stuff up out of total blue like this.
Well, we sent the email.
We got the email, we just...
Well, then let's put in the budget talks, too, today. I know we got the email, but no, we're not talking about that. Stick to budget. I'm already angry. Don't mess with me. No, everything's no. Zero everything out, same as was last year.
I don't... Yeah. Oh, I guess.
I don't want candy. No.
Candy or something. Okay.
Okay.
Are we back to budget now?
We're back to budget.
Well, if y'all yes to the other thing, we don't have to have it on the agenda.
Do you want me to talk about my budget?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the most of what I would like to talk about is salaries. The first thing, there was two public health nurses that we had find out, you know, leave in 2019. And they were both classified as public health nurse threes. We refilled those two positions as twos, because we wanted to give those nurses time to get experience and training. We didn't feel like it was fair to hire them in as threes. So we want to promote them to threes when they've reached six months. One will be in January, one will be in February. And they also should receive cell phone stipends. One of those cell phone stipends is paid through the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. The other one is for the immunization nurse who needs a cell phone stipend, because she will be the one getting the call in the middle of the night, except me and Donna, and having to go get vaccines out of the refrigerators that we had to do the other night at 2:00 in the morning, when the power was out. So that is really a priority for us this year. We feel like it is fair. They're doing the work now. It's the immunization nurse and the communicable disease nurse. And they should be threes, but we wanted to bring them in as twos. And then I... There's a... Right behind the org chart is a spreadsheet of those nurse salaries. So we think it would be fair to, if they get the 3% cost of living adjustment in January, if that's given to everybody, that they should receive another $2,000 bump, because that's what they would've received. They would've been paid $2,000 more a year if we would've hired them in as threes, but we did save money for six months by hiring them in as twos.
Did you have the threes on your... Your list of boys?
Yes, and like I said, we had... We had those physicians filled, but when they left...
Well, I was thinking we did, but I didn't. I was... That's the only question I had.
Yeah. So that is really a priority for us, is to get those nurses up to threes like they should be. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the health educator position. And we've talked a lot about that. We have a lot of duties that that health educator could do with worksite wellness, and maybe being a health coach, and helping teach classes, and doing social media. So we would really like to help add a health educator for this year. But I have a second option for you. We talked about taking that money out of the health insurance fund to pay for the health educators, since they'll do quite a bit of worksite wellness. Well, as we've refilled those positions with new nurses, our new nurse that does the health educate... The worksite wellness and does some health education is fabulous. Her time management skills are very excellent. And she is doing so much more than the previous worksite wellness nurse. She takes initiative. You don't have to... Anyway, she's fabulous. So, yes. Yes, she's fabulous. And I think that...
Still waiting for my trophies.
And I think that instead of the... And we also transitioned all our nurses to 4/10s instead... Or to 5/8s instead of 4/10s. And I think that's making our clinic run much more efficiently. Judy will start that in January, because we don't have those days where we don't... We're down a person, basically. So by having everybody work 5/8s, everything's running more efficiently also. So my second option, instead of adding a health educator position, is to use the health insurance funds... I have extra two. To partially fund that public health nurses during worksite wellness. I think she should be made a three in that case. But she should... And also, another nurse that could help out with that. And then to also partially fund Melinda's position out of the health insurance fund. So take a portion of those three positions instead of creating a new one, because Melinda has volunteered to step up and teach some of the cooking classes, because she has a...
Nutrition degree, right?
So instead of adding more staff, we'll just use the staff that we have more efficiently. And like I said, we've... I think that things are running better now, and the staff that we have have the time and the expertise to do those functions.
What do you think option two would cost the health insurance fund?
Well, you had talked previously about... Well, like, a health educator would be $44,000.
Right.
I don't know. I didn't do the percentages. Like, if we funded like 35... Or 30% of Jen, and maybe 15% of Jill, and like 25% of Melinda, I don't know what that would be.
It's gonna make life a little difficult to keep track of if you have people that come and go, and you're doing percentages of someone's salary. It would be cleaner to fund one position out of that fund than say, I'm going to fund parts and pieces of multiple people.
What if you funded Jen, and then used like what, you know, some of her money now to fund Jill and Melinda?
So you could work it that way, to where I'm going to fund one position out of the health insurance and take the money we're saving from funding that position that's already there and using it to... Yeah, you could do that. But the percentage is hard, because if you have a position that's open a portion of the year, trying to determine, I should be paying this amount or this amount, it's easier to, this whole person is funded from here, I'm going to move that money into general or something, but... We can talk about that more if that's something you're interested in.
I mean, I like the added programs. I like the added value that we get out of our health department. And as long as we can kinda minimize the amount of money that GR's gotta come up with. I mean, it seems like every program that we got's being funded by GR. And so we gotta... We gotta kinda really look at how much money GR's got, because eventually, we run out of money. But, I mean, if you can do more with the same, then that's awesome.
I kinda like the being creative.
And like I said, it all depends what person you have in that position. And right now, we have excellent staff in all those positions.
So if you're taking out the health insurance fund, how's that helping our health insurance? You gonna be able to measure that and see what our return on investment is?
What, you needing candy now?
Yeah.
Well, I got one piece on the floor somewhere.
I mean, I guess we'll be able to look at the biometric data and see if people change from last year, but affecting a health behavior change is really hard. I mean, I could give you all the information and slap that candy out of your hand every day, all day long, but you have to be, you have to be the one to make the change and, you know, we can't, yeah, exactly.
And I understand it. I'm not saying no to it. I'm just, I'm throwing some stuff out there and I already, repeating myself because I want to take care of the people that we do have, so.
Right.
And I know when we talk about the other two physicians, as we talked about them coming in as twos and, I was trying to refresh my memory if we said that once they proved themselves and stuff, we would, we could go to the threes, so. That one, I'm not, don't have any more questions off, but this one I'm a little more wary of and look and see what we stop left and just pull them from the health insurance, health insurance fund because it's healthy. I don't know.
I think it's, I would get rid of your candy soon.
Huh?
I think it's, I would get rid of your candy.
Oh, it's only been in here five years.
It's only a key for me.
When you get a check, I'm assuming you chew it up. I'm, I'm thinking it's probably not good for her.
So, okay. I, I don't really, I just kind of want to have a-
You got my curiosity.
So, I have not played with the numbers to see how this is to work. Maybe I'll try to sit down with Christie after the day and kind of maybe throw out some options of what it would say in general fund and how we would maneuver things around.
Okay. We also, um, in our budget request, asked for an environmental, public health specialist. Um, we talked about the, the numbers for the complaints are increasing and the time it takes to, um, get some of those, um, projects done. And we want to increase and we want to have food safety classes and, um, right now, our, our current staff just don't have time to teach those and develop those food safety classes or the onsite sewage classes because it takes so much time to investigate the complaints and, and work with, um, owners. The Elston trailer part comes to mind because it took Mike several times just to find the owner who lives in California. And, um, it's an interesting, um, code enforcement case. They have a confessional out there if you're, if you're looking for an extra. So, and then the nurse practitioner, you know, we've had different discussions about that. I did, um, still leave it on there if, if we want to talk about that or, um, I know we had to explore other options of contracting with one of the local hospitals, so. Um, in the WIC budget, um, we have one staff, her name is listed there, that is classified as a WIC clinic clerk, and that's really an error. She's doing the duties of a WIC certifier. So, she should be classified as a WIC certifier. And there was a couple of other promotions that I had listed there too. Um, we did ask for an additional WIC certifier, but we wanted to wait and see if the contract load increases or not. You know, they seem to think that it will increase as we go to the electronic benefits cards over the paper vouchers. But we just wanted to kind of leave that in there as a placeholder in case we do that, get that increase, which will come with an increase from the, with the DHSS, um, contract.
Did you want to say anything else about the WIC staff?
Um, just in regards to the, just a second, what you mentioned about correcting them. We don't have a WIC clerk position, so that should be eliminated from that, kind of, you know, from the description, and classify that as WIC certifier.
So, the changes to WIC would be covered by WIC Medicaid funds?
We have two WIC clerks, one WIC certifier, one. Is there a WIC certifier two?
There is.
There is. That's-
I don't know. There is currently on the list.
Oh, okay. We had talked about that, yeah.
That's a position they want to add is a certifier two.
Two, but the most important, if, if we're picking priorities here, the most important thing is to get that person who's classified as a clerk to a WIC certifier. That's our most important.
And that would be paid for by WIC.
Medicaid funds, yeah.
Yeah.
Um-
Okay, I'm sorry. She's going from clerk to WIC certifier one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, Christie, your organizational chart has a lead WIC certifier.
And that's the one that would be a two.
Okay.
If that was approved.
You should just have one WIC certifier.
Right.
Two clerks and one director.
Mm-hmm. Uh, with the changes in the insurance, um, Kristen pointed out, um, an issue with the adult brain injury contract. That staff person had never taken the insurance before, but due to a change in her husband's insurance, she did hop onto the county insurance. And we only get a set amount for that contract. And typically, it barely covers her salary, a little administrative fee for us and her mileage. So, with that increase in insurance, um, the contract's not going to be enough to cover her salary and her mileage. So, um, I'm requesting that the county, um, cover a portion of her salary because she does help us out with HIPAA stuff. She's on our CQI committee. She does other stuff around the health department besides just the adult brain injury contract. She actually knows quite a bit about HIPAA. So, um, Brian has that new software when he ran those reports. She's, she's helping us look at those because she's, like I said, she's very well versed in HIPAA. The other option I put in there too is to allow that person to use a county vehicle for their travel because her travel is typically four to five hundred dollars a month. It's usually about a thousand miles a month that she drives for her job. Um, she does cover fifteen counties. Um, usually she has anywhere between forty-five and fifty-five clients that she's case managing. And most of the time, she has about fifteen to twenty that live in Cole County. And she doesn't charge mileage for those, um, in-town clients. It's just the ones that are out of town.
So, she's covering fifteen counties. Do they pay anything?
Well, we get the contract from DHSS.
Okay.
But like I said, had covered all of the expenses previously. I know that Kristen hip it cost of living raises in the budget. I didn't include there if there was merit money, how we would, um, distribute those. Um, she did add a little extra to our vehicle expense line because with the fourth vehicle, we just have a little bit more gas. Um, we kind of talked extensively before about the immunization budget lines. I don't know if you want to talk about that anymore, about how we're going, we're, we're transitioning away from vax care. So, we'll be buying our vaccines. And then we'll be billing the, the insurance ourselves instead of having that third-party biller. So, if you, you can see from our line, um, the revenue and expense side are definitely going to go up, but we're actually going to be in the black. We anticipate. Um, Donna just took our numbers from October of eighteen until-
I think it was August to August.
Yeah, August to August of what we typically, the vaccines that we typically give and what we would, um, um, pay for them and what would be reimbursed from them based on, um, our historical numbers, so.
So, that's obviously the biggest change to their budget that you can see. And you can see that in the immunization fee insurance on the revenue side and then the, uh, immunization line on the expense side. So, two hundred thousand is what we're expecting to fill and bring back in. And a hundred fifty-seven is about where our expense is going to be.
Um, the last pages that I gave you, Kristen provided me a, like, historical of our budget. Um, because I know Jeff, we talked about like the salary line and how, um, physicians had been moved around and if you're paying more or paying less. So, on the top, on the third page in the appropriations, the salaries, um, they did go down for, I guess that's two thousand thirteen and then two thousand fifteen. But the other increases that have happened since then are all just the three percent cost of living adjustments. Other than that, we've not made huge, any, any adjustments to our, our salary line. I thought that historical perspective was interesting. Okay. And I gave you like a packet.
Page three.
Page three.
Yes. What would you want us to look at?
Well, we had talked about, um-
Where it's gone from.
The salary line, yeah.
There's been so much out since some positions.
Not right, right. Not filled, but overall, the only changes that have been an increase have just been like the cost of living adjustments.
Yeah, there's changes. They've made a position and then other people took on responsibilities and then, and saved money.
And the only other thing I would-
Then they come wanting more positions because they don't have enough.
Hey, we're trying to be creative. We're trying to use what we got.
Everybody is spare game today.
Okay. And the only thing I wanted to bring up was, um, I talked to Greg Kemp about this too, is considering some other option for our, when our building loses power. Because the other night Donna got called. It had lost power at like one seventeen. We didn't get called until the vaccine fridges started alarming. We didn't get notified that the power was out. And I don't know if I need to contact Amrin and see if I can get a text or something because by the time the fridges are alarming, then there's already an issue. So, by the time we got there, we loaded up six coolers worth of vaccine and got ready to take it to St. Mary's and then the power came back on. Which was fine because then we didn't have to load and take it. But then we waited for the fridges to come back under power and then we put them ba- all back in. So, I don't, I know that, you know, adding a, a generator for our whole building would be really expensive, but I also asked him, is there any way, is there like a battery backup issue or, you know, solution they could do just for the vaccine fridges? I would love for some other option because, um, not that Donna and I don't enjoy being at the health department from, you know, two to four in the morning, but-
I made Rainie come with us. I wasn't going by myself.
And, but, you know, what if, you know, we can't get there? What if we're out of town? You know, just trying to explore another option for those vaccine refrigerators. Because we had a huge amount of flu vaccine and extra T-DAP, so it was six coolers full of vaccine. So, anyway, I asked him if there was something else or-
Was he looking into it?
He, he said he would, yes. And I wanted to bring it up to you. Like I said, I know that re- even rewiring just that one room to do a refrigerator, but I was thinking, isn't there anything else we could do?
That's Brian.
Brian?
Yeah. Brian knows, he can do anything.
So, you didn't know power was out until the alarm for refrigerator went off?
Right.
And when they call me, yeah, they call me and they said that they had an alarm going off. And I'm like, are you kidding? We've got all new refrigerators. They said, well, you had a power outage at one eighteen and it was one forty-eight. So, then I knew it wasn't going to restore.
So, they don't call you then?
Did not until the alarms.
They called until the refrigerator goes out of range.
But they don't call if you lose power?
No.
See, I get, I get calls.
Maybe I need to call Amrin and see if I can get on, and then I was driving over there and it's like Hy-Vee had power, Walgreens had power, everybody had power, even the police across the street, and then our building was dark.
How did they know we didn't have power at one eighteen?
For somehow when the alarm went off, it said that you lost power. So, I don't know if something on their end shows that they lost power. I don't, because then you said, well, you lost power at one eight, because I, normally when they call-
Because I was wondering if you could set that up to be notified when it loses power.
Right.
Well, I asked them that too and, and I don't know if they really know it until they get an alarm from the refriger-
See, Sanatrol calls on the store. They call as soon as you lose power. And then over at my building on Dunkland, which is central Sanatrol, or whatever it is now, Stanley.
Well, my mom said my uncle got a text.
And then central security calls over on my building on Dunkland.
My mom said Amrin like texted my uncle when he lost power at their house at the lake, which he wasn't even there. So, I'm like, well, maybe I can get set up to get a text when we lose power at the health department.
I think a good idea to check into that.
Yeah, I'm going to. The other thing is, I mean, they're brand new refrigerators and they're not keeping temp very long, you know.
Hey, you bought them.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when you lose power, I mean, I don't know. And I don't know, huh?
He said you bought them. They're the extensive ones too.
Yeah, the freezer, the freezer never went out of range. I don't know. Um, and their ranges with the alarm is different than what our data loggers are. Our data log is what we really go by, but I think so that we get alarmed a little sooner, maybe. We have their, their parameters set a little different than ours, so.
Are they pretty full?
The vaccine fridges?
Yeah.
It just depends. Like, right now, we had a bunch of extra-
Because of the flu.
Flu and we had some extra T-DAP.
Was it pretty full that night?
Yeah, we had six coolers full.
Because a lot of times it's fuller. It isn't longer to help maintain the temperature.
Well, not full, full like you think of, I mean, yeah.
It's hard to describe. We can take a picture and show.
Other questions for the health department?
We're gonna, we're gonna boot you out and keep you in the middle.
Thank you.
And I misspoke. It's forty-one dollars a dose that Baxter's gonna charge us, not fifty-six, but they still charge your insurance about a hundred. But it's about forty-one dollars a dose, not fifty-six. I forgot that we charged fifteen dollars admin fee, which they would charge us.
So, do you want that on the agenda for Tuesday then?
Make that decision whether to go or just absorb it and it's a help.
I'll look at the email again and see if it makes any more sense to me.
All right, all right. The cheapest way we can do it is what I'd-
The way you all explained it to me, it seems pretty simple. And it seems, that it seems too simple.
Yeah, Debbie, I'd say put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I guess.
Well, you can go Thursday.
Yeah, we go Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, do that.
The sooner the better because we're using vaccine.
Yeah, do that, do that.
And we have to check him into Baxter and we have to, when we check him in today, we were gonna-
We're not in, we make that part of our schedule. Nothing else.
No, no more.
We were just gonna put partner bill and we have to know that because then they have to go back in two days. It's gonna be too late. We kind of have to know, I know. Because when we check him in today, we have to check him in one way or the other. So, we either have to check him in and get all their insurance information put in, and we're gonna have to call these people and get their insurance information because we didn't do that today.
Never were done with Melissa, then I gotta go to the bar.
We put a partner bill and they just bill me for it.
I have to be out of direct.
So, I mean, am I wrong? I mean, whatever we get charged and they send it to insurance, it comes back to you and you pay the difference, whatever the insurance bills you.
Less the discount.
Less the discount.
Either way, it's supposed to be.
Right.
It's more than likely it's gonna cost us more.
Right.
We'll kick Larry Benson out quick.
Sam, are you okay with just paying?
Yeah, yeah, let's just, just-
And we won't have to pay because they'll take it out of what they pay us for the other vaccines that he has, so.
Yeah, just, just-
Don't touch it.
He's already hangry.
Mine won't take long, I don't think.
Okay, okay.
Better wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to make him more angry.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Well, basically, um, I think I sent this to you guys already. Um, it's just the normal, um, stuff that I've normally had. Um, I don't think I had anything go up. The only thing we were planning on doing that imagery flight this year or next year, and we aren't going to do that so that we won't have that expense. So, basically, everything is good for what I've got here. And I think that's what you have approved on the budget. Um, the only, um, additional thing I was, I was just trying to rack my brain and think about was, um, next year, we got the website redo that we're, that Civic Plus gives us for free of charge, the redesign. So, we're gonna start that, or early next year. Um, the only thing I was wondering if, um, the commission wanted to maybe see if there was some money that we, maybe if we wanted to get the professional photos to put on the website to might, maybe jazz it up a little bit versus just the ones that we kind of randomly found. I don't think, you know, a lot of the stuff out there is not free to use, you know, unless somebody gives it to you. Um, the other stuff, the other thing I'm gonna work on, um, kind of cleaning up our logo that is on the website, the county outline with the, the seal. You can't really enlarge it and make it look good because of the way it was created. I didn't really create it to really be used in such a-
Do you have the one that I have on the wall? That's what you're talking about?
Well, but that, no, that's the county seal. That's not the logo.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm, I'm gonna work on trying to clean that up.
Because we got, we should have that off.
Yeah, and I'm gonna use that.
And you will add the bicentennial.
I've already got that.
Yeah, you got, I mean, you got that, okay.
Yeah, I've already got that. And that, that we can put on there temporarily, but I'm, we're looking at the redesign for the, you know, foreseeable future of the whole website, not just for the bicentennial. Anyway, that's all.
We got that too, which is just the courthouse.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't seen that one yet.
So, no, no changes then?
No changes.
Any questions for Melinda?
I think so.
No?
I got two more people on our, our census committee too. I got two more people on our census committee.
I've got our, I've got our website. I'm throwing up on, on our Cole County website. We've got a census, um, email address, um, twenty twenty, leecow@colecounty.org.
And I was with the bishop last night and he said if we get an article, he'll put it in the Catholic Missourian too, so.
Bill, you're next, but we're gonna take a, a five-minute break.
I just have to-
I really don't have to.
Oh, well, let Bill go first.
Okay, okay.
Well, get it done real quick. I did not see anything as far as what we've done in the past years. The commission's always been, uh, good, uh, as far as budget. I don't see any outstanding costs that we might have other than fishing up our disaster stuff.
Knock on something. I know you already are going.
Yeah.
The only thing I want to point out in Bill's budget that looks a little different is in his emergency line.
What page?
Uh, eighty-three. Um, line five-three, eight-five-five, um, you see it quite a large increase there that is for the city sirens that's moving in his grant. We will have to pay that bill and they will have to reimburse us. So, we had to put the expense in to get it reimbursed back.
Yeah, I think they approved the MOU last night.
So, um, that is in there as a one-time expense. It will come out next year, but you'll see that large increase in that line.
We kind of did that last year with-
No revenue there from the city on that?
Um-
Yeah, we'll be, uh, we'll get our fifteen thousand back.
Yeah, it's up in the FEMA FEMA grant. It went to eighty-two from sixty-three.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, the money will come back in from the grant, a portion of it will come from the city. Did I include their proportion?
Right.
I think I did in the forty-two.
Yeah.
Their forty-two for the city.
Oh, okay.
So, part of it's in the grant, part of it's coming from the city and all the expenses coming out.
Okay.
And it, it is here, so we'll be putting it in the next week, week.
Where's that going? Somewhere here?
Over behind the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, that alley.
That's what I thought.
So, there'll be, uh, that's a good head. We're still working on the center towns. Got a whole pile for that, so. I think we're good. I just couldn't think of anything.
I don't think you can retire until we get to center town.
The what then?
I don't think you can retire till you get to center town.
Oh, well, we'll see. I'm here. Okay.
Any questions for Bill?
No. No.
Thank you.
We're gonna call Larry then.
Bill?
So, you guys think of five or ten minutes?
DR?
Oh, uh, probably not today.
No, we'll be talking tomorrow, right?
Okay, and I think this one, it's probably gonna be.
There's something there, do you need more?
I wasn't gonna jump. I didn't want to jump here.
Yeah.
There's a little question to me.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
You're a little volunteer, aren't you, John?
We should, do we call Larry and tell him?
I'm calling.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
Well, what are the emails we keep getting like randomly, like need more information on?
Oh, this is such a, I'm sure, I'm sure they're great stuff. And they'll actually have all the stuff in there. And it keeps adding reminders and stuff like that. I'm not gonna say.
Okay.
I have some other information.
Right, yeah.
Can you explain what it would be helpful?
And what, how much would somebody ask me? I work with grants, they just, they're, they're, they own their grants.
What do you need me to say? I mean, we take your roots. I don't know what you, what I can give you.
We got food at you, pretzels and oranges.
We got food coming, so.
No stickers.
Yeah.
Oh, I made pretzels for us.
You made them? What'd you put on them?
Yeah, they're Italian seasoning on them.
I'm gonna try it.
These are, uh, these are just with the Italian dressing. I got my own other, but these probably got more salt than we all.
These are, these are just with the Italian dressing, I got my own other, but these probably got more salt than we all.
No, I'm a salt person.
You, okay, you, I might put too much, I buy that very big salt and put it on.
Questions for the interviews?
Uh, yeah, I got a list of them, just two from you and three from Turner.
Well, we need to see what size shoe she wears, or he wears, to see if they can fill Bill's shoes, so.
I kinda emailed them out last night, like.
Thanks, Bill.
Oh, it's all right with me.
No, those are, those aren't even the ones with salt on, dude. That's Italian seasoning on it.
You're not getting yourself?
Yeah, it's, you take a half cup of olive oil or oil, you gotta get, well, it works better with these pretzels. And you put that packet of seasoning in there, and.
Just like a seasoning from a salad dressing or something?
Yeah, it's like Italian dressing that you pick it up, and now I just take, I got some kind of seasoning, barbecue seasoning stuff that, yeah, I'll make, I'll put different ones in there, but, and then I put a ton of salt on the other ones, but those are my batch, and I gotta keep mine and Kathy's separate, so, not trying to kill her. I put salt on my salt sometimes.
Okay, what am I supposed to do with Chris Estes's reimbursement? Oh, I'll ask you that later. Okay, now I started.
Next victim.
Now I've got Gavin on my backup.
Those pretzels are good.
I sent you an email about my part-time salary.
I didn't respond.
Obviously not.
Um.
I thought I might be short.
Yeah, do you wanna wait and see, or?
I don't know, I know, I know they don't like you coming back, and I know I'm gonna be short this year, they're going down my mind.
Don't get short with us.
I wouldn't think of it.
He comes out of there like.
These are good.
They are good.
What do you put on them?
Uh, some kind of, I'll have to look it up and see what it is, Italian seasoning.
Italian, not ranch?
It's a half cup of oil, and you stir them every ten minutes, or twenty minutes, or every hour.
We do some that, we do crackers and pretzels that has like red pepper and stuff, they're spicy, or but.
Just a little seasoning, they're so nice.
I like these pretzels, but where are the pretzels in this?
I'll have, it's only ones that are square like that, and then they have a butter flavor too, that's like three dollars.
I don't know, but I like, they're not real thick, like, some of them are too thick, like, it's too much pretzel.
And that's why these work so good, you get good seasoning with the little pretzels, so.
No changes, right, Larry?
Perfect, next.
Hang on, so. These came from.
I threw this on.
These came from Italy.
Is that what we were talking about there?
Sure. They're kinda sticky, but they came back from the submarine.
They came back on a submarine?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, Jeff, I even got nights at Columbus Tootsie Rolls.
So, put them in your desk long enough for you to be able to.
Well, I got, and then these came back from Spain on a submarine.
Are those lemon drops?
Yeah, I think so, they're kinda stuck together, but you know, submarines.
I'm scared to take candy from you now, cause he gave me one while ago that was supposed to be.
I ate it, it was good.
And it was chewy.
It was, it was Werther's.
My numbskull are now, they've been up here so, so now they're probably good.
Oh, no.
Chew them like a skill.
I just gotta figure out how to get this out of here without it stick.
This has got enough sticky stuff on it, I can't get it off my hand.
I know, well, paper sticks to your hands then. I gotta throw those away.
Did you throw it away?
Yeah.
What are you trying to, hopefully that's not the Tootsie Roll.
No.
Break some teeth in here, but not the good time of the year to do that.
We need napkins in here.
I'm not bringing cookies, but I ate them all.
Nobody wants to sign this, or why don't you give them a napkin?
Well, I had a question, cause I thought we just talked about getting it from contingency. Kristen explained to me that he found that money and those to transfer.
The next one he brings is gonna come out of contingency.
I looked back at last year, it was like six thousand.
This is what I'm gonna pay for October.
Okay.
It was sixty-seven hundred in December, and.
Communications, is it gonna look like?
Seventeen or eighteen hundred in November.
So, that was transferred?
Part, part of the savings in communications is due to his new internet, it's switched from CenturyLink to MediaCom, so it's gonna switch from his.
I know, it's all, we're talking about not taking up the salary instead of.
Hey, did you get my email about, sorry, I'll get Richard Peterson, Eric Peterson?
He's not gonna come. He's not coming.
Oh, then we will be done by then.
Sorry, I haven't been looking at my emails, I'm not used to looking at, not having the laptop, oh my gosh, he's gonna get these away from me.
So, is Larry, Eric okay with him with his?
Yeah, he didn't have any, he goes, you gave me everything I asked for, I said, well, you don't ask for a lot.
Okay. Okay.
I know, they're good. I could take, I could take.
Find me white, find me white, show me the light. I don't, I don't need the same.
Okay, sit down.
Oh, right, right.
Pick a change.
Fix it.
Well.
Not really. But maybe. Uh, he is page twenty-seven.
We're gonna pass that page.
Lemon drops are good, once you get them out, but then your fingers are so sticky. Sticky fingers.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead. The only issue, or, it's not really an issue, the only concern I have is it may be in my part-time salaries, that I, that I would actually probably prefer that that be thirty thousand instead of twenty-eight thousand. I think I'm gonna be about seventeen hundred over budget this year. I'm pretty sure I'll be able to move that from one of the other lines where I end up coming under. But our printing cost and mail costs keep continuing to rise, so that's normally where I have a little bit of leeway, I'm not sure I'll have that next year, so that's really my only concern in the budget. I would point out that both last year and this year, we've increased the income last year by, I think, about nineteen thousand dollars to cover bank charges, this year, we covered all the bank, or, I guess that was twenty-seventeen, we moved nineteen thousand dollars. Well, but it was for the seventeen expenses. In eighteen, we moved thirty-two thousand dollars to cover the twenty-eighteen bank charges, so, we actually, that line item, for all practical purposes, could be zero, because we're, we're recouping everything that we're paying out. So I guess from practical point of view, I'm coming in under thirty-two thousand dollars under, under budget.
You guys have any questions?
Thank you.
No, I'm trying to come up with something.
Well, I appreciate that, that you always are willing to work with me to keep the collector's office moving forward and take care of the taxpayers.
Vice versa, makes it easier to work with somebody that wants to work with you, so.
Yeah, appreciate you helping out with the assessor's office too.
Hopefully I can help further.
So, on this, is Eric coming up to go out here and run a little ahead? That's the last one we got.
He's not.
That's the last one listed today, because Eric Peterson, he didn't have any issues, we can call him if you guys have questions about his budget.
Nope.
No, he's good with it.
So.
In the past, we could go back through some of the other ones that were here and make a decision on them, so you don't have such a long week next week. Or, we can wait till next week to discuss some of the issues that were brought up that we don't really have clarification, or if you, I guess we could talk about other budgets now too, if you want.
So, I guess to Jeff's point, I just kinda like to know, you do have a three percent cost of living increase in there, or three percent, some type of adjustment?
Right, so I included three percent, I did not specify if it's COLA or merit, so right now, there's a three percent on there. We can discuss if you wanna do that as a COLA or a merit, my first thoughts are COLA. Only because there's lots of departments that give merit across the board, um, to just give it across the board. I do have certain departments, like the larger departments, like the Sheriff's Department, that does a merit correctly, because they have a large enough pool. And they have requested that a portion of it be merit.
So.
But it's very hard to do a merit truly the way you should with a department that has three or five employees in it.
Or one.
Or one, yes. Well, one you truly can do, because you don't have anybody else to pull from.
If, I know some of them made a comment as to trying to maybe fix a position they feel is underpaid, and using that merit to actually try to fix that. But does that screw up the grid, and do we need to look at the bigger picture and go, okay, if that's an issue, then we need to address that separately, and look at that on the grid?
Well, so I think you need to break that down too, though, is, is the problem with the position a market issue? Is it something where they can't hire due to market? Or is it, I have additional duties that maybe my title or job description needs to change, and that's why I deserve more money? Or is it truly just based on, I do a really good job and I wanna give this person more money than I give someone else? So, I think it needs to be broken down into what you're trying to accomplish there, because merit can fix one of those issues, but it cannot fix the other two.
Well, we have positions that have people that are, I guess have more qualifications, like a certification or degree or something, that's maybe not required for that position, but it's nice for them to have it.
Debbie's turning it up, and Steve's turning it down.
Oh, did he just turn it back?
Yeah, Steve came over and turned.
Freezing over there.
So, I guess, my thoughts on that particular circumstance is that I think we need to try to implement some kind of rules when you're hiring someone. That even though that may not be required for the position, that makes you more valuable as an employee than someone who doesn't have it. And maybe at that point, you can go above the starting salary by a certain percentage or something to attract those people into the position without changing your title and stuff, because you're still doing the same duty. So, I, I mean, we've talked about it before, like, I know Boone County, I think, can go like five or six percent above the starting salary with a hire before they have to go ask for permission, but I think they have a set group of things that you tick off that I have, you know, in the Sheriff's Department, I have military experience, or I have a degree in public safety, or I have a certain.
We can look at your previous deputy.
Right.
I had a lot more qualifications as far as the education that was required, so, do we, do we try to recruit people like that, and say, well, you know, we'd like to have the best of the best, or at least better of the best?
Right.
But is it required for that position? It's not required. But if you do have them in there, then do you give them to, to attract them, to get them here?
So for, like, so just like you were talking about, so those boxes that you could check off, you, so this, if you can check off five boxes, you can give five percent, but otherwise, it's one percent per box.
Something like that, that would be my, yes.
And, and ver- and verification and stuff would come through with the payroll to go into the personnel file.
So, that's something to look at, and then I think we got a policy for it, then it's not just me arguing, well, we don't need that for the position, and probably ten people all.
And I really do think that we need set rules for, say, the, the health departments moving from a nurse two to a three, or a WIC certifier one to a two. What are, what are the things that make you a one versus a two? And at what point can you move from a one to a two? Kind of public works is maintenance worker to equipment operator, one. What are the boxes you have to check off that you've learned and you know, that then allow you to move to the next step? And is there something out there that our employees could shoot for to move up that scale to try to retain those people and keep them here?
But also, do we need three threes, you know, that's, that's where everybody's gonna go.
Right.
Everybody's gonna go to the top in three to four years, we're gonna have all of them at level three, none of them at level one.
Correct.
But is that what that department really needs, or is that how they're using it just to give, reward the good people?
I think you bring them in, you really don't know what, what your employee, what skills that employee has, what they can do, as, as they've been with you, you, you see that, oh, this, this person is, you know.
Well, and I think.
Much more exceptional than.
That was my argument with Road to Bridge, was at the bottom, yes, I think that you can make that move automatic if you, you've done your things. I think beyond that first layer, I think that at that point, you have to somehow control how many of each position you have.
Yes.
And that maybe you can't move up again until there's an open position or something. But I think when you're coming in at the bottom, I think you need something that you can eventually move to, to give you that incentive. But maybe after that point, it's that another position is open for you to move in. At that, at that point, you're being promoted in another position.
Right, and, cause you're doing a great job, that's where the mon- merit money, strictly merit, don't change the grid, don't be moving people on the grid, just to give them the merit, because you don't need threes, all threes, or you don't.
So, that's something else, um, my proposal of three percent, if you do a COLA or merit or however, I'm not proposing moving the starting salaries. I think that instead of moving them annually with a percentage or something, it needs to be reviewed every two to three years, and make it more of a market and possibly like a CPI adjustment every two to three years to that starting, and not moving it every year with our employees. Because I think that's creating some of the issues that the Sheriff's Department was having, you know, in the years where we're not giving anything, then that new person's coming in at the same place as the person who's been here three or four years, and it creates that compression issue that we don't want. So I think it should be your review every, I think, three years, unless there's a market change, you know. I think the ones in juvenile and the ones in maintenance were market adjustments, I think if you go out and you look at their comparables, we're not keeping up with where we should be, that's why that proposal was in there. I think those could happen at any time, depending on what information you bring.
And I do think within that time period that she's talking about, I hope to, you know, we did sign the HR consulting agreement this year, and we are using them, and their first step is to get the manual done, they are definitely working on that, and they have the first round of draft done. Hasn't been distributed to anybody yet, but shortly it will. Then after that, I, I really wanted them to come in and look at our job descriptions, make sure we're up to date, how, how they need to be legally, first exempt, non-exempt, physical demands, all of that stuff be, you know, that we're on track with that. And then, if not, have them look at the market for us on those positions. But I think, you know, the structure, they will lead us into one, as far as within two to three years. My vision, I don't know what you guys think about that, but I think it would be, and I told them, all we have is the starting salary right now, basically, for all of the positions, we have a little bit of different structure in the Sheriff's Department and in EMS than the rest of us, but that's what they do, they say.
Yeah, it's, it's just too hard, I mean, you know.
It is.
You can, you can set policies, you can have criteria, you can check. You can, you can set policies, you can have criteria, you can check the boxes, you can go above that and then, then you all of a sudden, now you're into compression issues and, and there's, you know, yeah, you want him to take more duties, but there's only a $500 difference in the starting wage. And so, I mean, and I think we have that somewhat addressed that, you know, if you jump up, it's 2,000 or whatever.
That went away with Archer study.
It did.
And that went away when you guys approached our schedule, so.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we need something to that effect as well. Like, if you are taking on additional duties and maybe, you know, moving that, that step and you're already there where that starting is, there needs to be some kind of adjustment for doing that. Otherwise, what's the benefit to the employee other than the title?
Right.
I just feel like, I don't feel like most of our job descriptions are anywhere close to market.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm, I'm amazed that we can hire and stay as fully staffed as we are.
Hey, look at market though and market plus benefits.
I was gonna say, I think our benefit package, I, especially if you're comparing a government position to a private position, are pretty impressive and worth the value. I mean, if you're coming from a private that doesn't get holidays, doesn't have paid time off other than maybe 10 days a year, you know, doesn't have a retirement program. If you're coming from a private that is not providing those and coming to government, you can't just look at salary. You have, I mean, just the amount of money that we put into serpent loggers for an employee is significant. If you had to do that in the private market with a salary that was more, you're gonna end up making less money because you're taking off the top and putting it in your retirement, whereas we're doing it for you.
But, and I get it, we're at that age, we think about that stuff. But the new hires that we're getting, all they're looking at is the dollar. They don't want the benefits. They're still on their parents. They want the dollar. But the other part of that is, we're lucky that we're, that the state of Missouri has the eighty and out and we're getting some of those people coming to us with wanting to work five more years. Now, will that dry up? Yes. That employment pool's gonna dry up because they're gonna have to work till 90 now, you know, and, and so, we're not going to get that. Are we gonna have to address it then? Yeah. It's disheartening to some people that have been here for a long time when our salary is here, but when you hire somebody in, you can't bring them in at what we're making. So, you have to make them more. So, do I think ours are below? I think ours are below, you know.
I think ours are below the state and ours are below the city. And I mean, so when I look at other governments, probably below Boone County and probably some of the others, so, you know. So, when we get to those points where, hey, I can move up to, you know, from here to here and then I got all these positions above me and I, I, I can't go anywhere, now I start looking to go somewhere else and, and make more money and especially the younger people, you know.
I would say right now, we're very comparable with the state, but as you've heard in the news, the state's underpaid compared to every other state. I would say we're very comparable with the state. I'd say when you go to the city of Boone County or something like that, we are underpaid.
Well, when you're looking at certain positions, like, like the juveniles, uh, nobody's coming here for 26, five with a college degree. You know, so those definitely need, I think, to be upgraded, at least the two. But keep doing it individually or as long as you can separate the person from the job and separate what you need from keeping it a mechanism for merit.
There might be certain employees that are only worth 26,000.
I know, but you can't do that.
No, I know.
Can't do that.
Well, but there's also gonna be somebody that you hire in, maybe at 26, that, that you'd like to promote and you'd like to keep cause they're a rock star or something, you know, you give them anything and they go do it, but.
Right.
I mean, there may not be that job there and so, now all of a sudden, you take a, an employee that could've been a great employee for a long time and they're gone.
I, I think there's always going to be the exception. I don't think that you're ever going to have policies or rules that meet every circumstance.
Right.
There's always going to be an exception. But you're hoping that you have enough of them to meet most of the situations and that you do just rarely have an exception.
Yeah.
And not that every circumstance is an exception.
Right. And it's kinda like the Archer's study was too. It didn't fit everything, but it gave us a structure. It gave us a, a mechanism to use. You know, we got ourselves in trouble with not increasing it by the cost of living, or by the market at least. I don't want that to happen to the start of this, but I also wanna get the job descriptions in there that match it. And then I want you, you guys to set the, the org chart, what each department actually needs. You know, like, how many nurse threes do you really need? How many nurse twos do you need, you know?
I think last year's, or this year's approval of the starting salary was just the first step in many things that we need to tackle. Same thing with the policy manual. I think there's quite a few things in there that still need to be tackled.
Yes.
Travel reimbursement being a big one. I don't know. I, I, it depends on what you want that next step to be. I know that there are multiple employees out there that have called and said, like, how do I move from a one to a two? Or how do I get from here to there? What are the qualifications of this position versus this one? I don't currently have that.
Right.
We started with, this is a starting salary, hopefully to fix the people that are currently here, but we need to continue.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is either, but I mean, so one of the things, it just, you know, kept bringing it up this morning, but, you know, all these different functions of county government that are under GR, it can't keep growing. You know, we have to find creative new ways to go out and find funding to help offset some of these costs. I mean, and so, when we have people that are doing that, when we're finding more revenue to help offset costs. And so, you know, mental health is gonna be a huge issue going forward. And so, whether that's in juvenile, or that's over at the health department, or that's in pre-trial services, or whatever that is, we can't just keep funding programs with no revenue.
Unfortunately, and if there is no funding out there, it's gonna come to you guys cutting back on the services that we.
Right.
So, what is your focus on services? You know, to educate our county, uh, I'm just gonna pick on the health department. To educate our county on other resources that people can go to to get services, or we supply the services, you know. So, it's, it'll come to that eventually because without change in legislation, I don't think there's much more revenue or creativeness you can do.
Right. Well, so the, so when you, when you don't provide some of those mental health services and you don't provide some of that stuff on this, on the front end and you don't fund that, it usually comes around and you have more people in your jail and more people that you have to pay to house. And obviously, the state's cutting back on their amount of inmates that they can take. And so, where does that excess end up? Ends up in the county jail.
In the local.
Yep.
But mental health, it's, it's just getting bigger and bigger. Last night, Cap Breach and his Board of Governors, that was Dr. Allen, that was the first thing he talked about was, was mental health, the increase in the younger.
Well, I was gonna say, we've seen it just in school alone.
Yeah, it's, it's.
The amount of information coming home with kids as young as my kids approaching the subject and talking about it and.
Which I don't, I don't understand, but I, you know, it's.
It's an ever-changing world.
Yeah.
Okay, let's walk through just a couple of the things we talked about today. So, Larry's 2,000 in hard time. Do you wanna wait that until salaries or do you want to put that in?
I mean, I'm always good with LV. I mean, he spends less than, he only spends what he needs to spend. He's always willing to help out wherever he needs to help out, so.
Yeah.
If he don't, if he don't need it, he ain't gonna spend it, so.
Anyone else?
I'm okay with it. I'm, yeah.
I'll just kinda wait till the end, but.
Well, I think.
Just cause we say it right now doesn't mean you can't go.
Well, you can always go and take it off if it's not, if not set in stone.
Yeah, if you're listening, LV, you still gotta be nice.
Can, can you, uh, well, you, can you have a way to highlight any of the changes that are made?
So, when we're done and we're ready to go back, I can run a report that tells you which ones have a difference in between mine and yours. So, yes, there is a way to go back and see what those are.
Okay.
Um, so Bill and Melissa, Melissa doesn't really have any changes. Health Department, mainly her concerns were regarding salaries, other than that one grant that may be a little short.
I mean, I really like her second option of trying to, to use some of the health insurance fund, but I mean, that's, that's adding a position. Basically adding one position and then some salary adjustments to a couple other positions or.
Yeah, I, I was a little confused on her second option there. So, you tell partially fund a two. With an upgrade to three.
See, she's using it as a merit thing, so.
Yeah, I don't know. We're gonna just sit down and kinda work through that one. Cause I'm still seeing an additional position, whether it's fully funded from there or not, I'm seeing an additional position. Um, we'll check on the generator at the health department. Like, check into, I don't know, that the refrigerator thing's gonna be a quick thing, but.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem putting a small generator in there, just something that could, and I don't know if there'd be a way to put a really small generator on the backside of the building that would just run the fridges. I mean, I don't need the whole building to run.
No, I, that, after what we, after what it cost over there.
Or if, or Bill has some type of, some emergency management agency has a generator that we could just hardwire into. But, I mean, then you get into these switches and everything else, I mean, it's just.
So, I guess the other option would be, is there an option for some sort of battery backup like there is for Brian's computer stuff? I mean, I don't know if that's an option, but that could be something in a power outage that would work for the short term.
Right.
I don't know that it would work.
Just a five, 10, 12 hour.
Yeah, that would, to me.
But that may just prolong the problem because it's not going to fix the issue that they're having. So, if the power goes out, the backup kicks in.
Right.
If the power doesn't kick back on, that's just delaying how long it's gonna take for the alarm to go off and notify them. I don't know.
But then in that time period, you might be able to contact emergency management or somebody and bring a generator over and plug it in. Run an extension cord.
Well, yeah, it sounds really simple, but it is really simple.
It can be.
Have to figure out something besides like a gas power going to run inside or a bunch of extension cords.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's, there's ways to do it besides paying $42,000 for another.
Generator.
Generator.
Um, what about Michael and the attorney costs? I mean, that kind of is what it is. I don't know.
Well, if we don't, first off, on the hours, that is what it is. And, you know, if we budget it that much, but they don't, they don't have that many, that's no big deal. But raising it to the 45, are we better off?
Well, so his original request was to raise it to 50. We talked about this one before, was raise it to 50. And the compromise was, let's go to 45 and take it in smaller.
Or that, is that where we're at now?
It's 45.
What he changed it to.
That's what I thought. So, I mean, obviously, you know, you think it's gonna be this, it may be this. I mean, you know, we make budget adjustments at the end of the year, you know, as needed and so.
Or we can go up to what he spends this year. I don't know. This transfer plus another one.
This year, what he's spending though is the 40.
That's true.
So, yeah. So, he's at 114 right now. He's saying he needs another 11. Is that where we're about?
It's 125.
So.
Go to 140. Or 140, no?
So, take that 125 divided by 40, what is, how many hours is that?
I mean, we still got a, what, three, four weeks to go, plus whatever had.
Well, that's, as we get through the end of the year.
Right, I mean, so people's got stuff that they just haven't, he hasn't received the bill yet on.
Yeah, he's saying December, we won't get till January, so.
Um, so that's 31, 25 hours times 45 is 146, 25 compared to my 136, 125.
Our 145 and see what happens.
I'm good at 136. There's contingency in there somewhere, right?
Yeah, in York, contingency, 124.
Are you going to the 45 then?
It's already at 45.
45 is where we're paying already.
So, the 45 is based on 3,025 hours. And right now, his money he's spending this year, he's at 3,150 hours. So, he's about 125 hours more this year than where we expected him.
Cause when I was ciberning a while ago, I thought that he.
That I would, which the numbers aren't gonna go down any next year. I mean, it's, it's.
You never know. I mean.
Oh, I've.
I mean, he could have less kids he's gotta deal with. I mean, I don't see that happening.
I don't see that.
He could have twice as many and he could have 6,000 hours there, so, I mean, I mean, you never know. So, you gotta, you gotta budget something and try to keep people to stick to it and, um.
I guess Mike's.
The 150, 1250 was the 3,025 hours?
At $50 an hour. His original request was to go to $50 an hour.
So, you're saying 146, 25.
I'm thinking we should go to 140,000.
Mm-hmm.
That at least gives you that cushion to get to where we think he's gonna be this year as far as number of hours, but increasing the per hour to 45. So, 146, 25 would be about where he's at this year.
Can you pull up, uh, in that report, how far back can you go? Years?
How many years?
How many years? I just go lots of years. What do you wanna see?
Well, go back as far as you can.
So, we went a long time without raising the attorney's fees. And now we're talking about doing it this year. We had this discussion six months ago. And you have a refresh Monday right on it, but we were looking at it going 10, possibly 10 an hour. And go ahead and bite the bullet and be done with it, or we may have to do five this year, five next year. Eventually, we're gonna pay the piper. So, when is it gonna stop though? Are we gonna go up five every year? Till it's $100 an hour or what have we got here? Is 45 gonna make us whole, get us any good, or are we still gonna go to 50 next year?
Does professional services? Yes, it's over here, so.
132, 121.
So, 105, 103, 118, 101, 100, 125.
Yeah, so, this is a number that I'm. 2013 activity, we're a little over $100. We were paying for juvenile. Okay, 14, we're pretty close to the same. Now we start jumping up. We're at 1, 142, 1, 241. Now we're almost at 1.5.
So, at one point in there though, we added that, we added three people and started doing his residential side. So, some of that cost is.
Well, I'm, I'm good with that. We didn't add any revenue with it.
We did, but it's maybe offsetting some of the cost of it. It's not necessarily making us money either.
Right.
It's no different than the bottom line at the health department or.
So, you, you can look at that too, but so, but here, we had this much in revenue. Now we're, we're less.
So, yes, his grant funding and stuff has gone down.
Gone away. Money's going away. Our expenses are still up. I mean, at some point, it's, it's so upside down and backwards that, you know, I, I get it that we need to have services, but, I mean, I don't know, it's just something.
Let's say a lot of that's mandated. I mean, I don't know what you can.
Unfunded mandate.
I don't, yeah, but I don't know what you can.
So, if the government told you they give you 500,000 and you can give them 2 million, you'd say, oh, yeah, that's a great deal.
No, I, no, I, I agree. No, I think, I think it stinks. No, I, no, I, I agree, no, I think, I think it stinks. I think it's, I think it's.
Unfortunately, that's how a lot of different counties and places got in trouble, because they weren't giving out grant money right and left. It was tied to people.
Yeah.
And then the people never left, because we got the services and political body do not wanna take services away, because that doesn't look good. So they kept the services, kept the people, money went away.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's that same trend in the health department, it's that same trend overall, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, so the health departments have been a little bit different, and they control their spending somewhat.
Right near as well.
I just wanna see where you're going with this.
But this, I mean, you've got, you've got, you know, he's talking about eighteen here, and age eighteen and and twenty-one.
Right.
And it's every, you know, the, the legislature keeps adding more on to it, and it's, it's all unfunded mandate, I mean, what do you do? You, are you gonna break the law and then?
It's an invalid law if it's not funded, right, so if you're not.
Well, yeah, I, I.
I mean, if you have.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna.
Right, control does some extent better. Maybe they don't have as much regulations as a facility like the juvenile center would. It would all have to be analyzed year to year, what happened, you know, but.
Right, but I mean, there's several years there that, you know, went down and it was controlled, and so, you know, we're up a little bit.
Overall. Stay the same. Yeah. I mean, it is, it is, it's a cycle, and the state government filters it down, and they say, I'm not doing it anymore, then it's up to the local entity to say, oh, God, I gotta keep these services going, so I guess we'll pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how smaller counties do it, though.
They don't have the services. They don't have health departments. They don't have a juvenile center.
Well, Osage County has health department.
And of course, you're on the right track. Our health department and our juvenile service city residents, I know input from the city on either one of those.
But they are also.
They are county citizens, so. Right.
So what are thoughts on attorneys?
Attorneys?
Well, I'm, I'm up in the air with it right now, because if we leave it at forty dollars an hour, we can get thirty-four hundred an hour.
We're, we're forty-five is where we are.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-five is what.
But we budgeted at forty an hour, so that's why it's over already this year?
No, it has not changed yet. The forty-five would not happen until twenty-twenty.
I thought we were at forty-five.
Oh.
No, we talked about it earlier, in the budget, changing it or not changing it where you guys were, and we said, instead of going to fifty, we were gonna stay at forty-five, but it has not changed yet.
Okay, so it'll change in twenty-twenty?
It's at forty right now.
I think all those bills that we just got were at forty-five.
I don't think so. They shouldn't have changed it, because he doesn't, it didn't change in this year's budget.
I don't know, I assume maybe after that.
Good night.
So I, I guess my question is gonna be, do we wanna go to the forty-five, and then, I don't know if I'm working backwards or forwards here. We were supposed to say, here's your pile of money, you can pay him forty or forty-five dollars an hour, but you gotta make it last. You can get four hundred more hours out of them.
Well, I like.
At forty an hour.
Yeah. Well, I like Kristen's logic on that. Go back to the hours, add the five dollars, make the budget for that.
To the hours that he's gonna have for this year, or the three thousand twenty-five hours that we.
No, the hours for this year.
Which, we're just assuming it's thirty thousand twenty-five, right? We're just gonna stick with that?
No, it's more than that, so I think.
So you're gonna take actual hours, okay, so then.
I'm thinking if he's at a hundred and twenty-five for this year, which is what it kinda says this morning, divided by forty dollars an hour, gets me to three thousand one something.
Thirty-one twenty-five?
And then I took that times forty-five.
But you have one forty-six twenty-five?
That's what I think we should use.
If, if we think that's a real number, I think it's gonna go over that, though, or not. Maybe, could be, no, yeah.
I have any idea.
We don't have any control over it, though, do we? That's what we're saying, but we can't.
At some point, we do, so we're not paying it, we're out of money.
So when they bring them kids in, either they're being abused or neglected, then, and we, we have to send them to court with somebody.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Who, I mean, do you just stop paying the bill? Start.
I mean, at some point, you can stop paying any bill that you want.
I don't wanna get to jail reimbursement, though.
Do what now?
I don't wanna get to the point where attorneys have done the work, sent us the bill, and then we're not paying for the work they've already completed, because we don't have the funding to do it. Then we have this rear edge and we're behind and.
We did that for a few years.
We did.
Just hold them to the next year.
What if that goes up? Two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, what are you gonna do? We're just gonna pay it?
I don't know what make, I don't, I have not done enough research into it to know what makes us pay that.
It's a good question. At what point can we say, no, we're not gonna do this anymore?
Thank you.
So same as, I guess, the prisoners.
I mean, because it's.
Go send them on the court out or on the Capitol steps and say, hey, we're out of money, we can't keep doing this for yet. No, thank you, I got my flavored water.
I'm good, I got it.
Crazy like that.
Do one of those.
Well, dude, that's so then. Geez, we had the health department, there's more, it's like, I wouldn't have to do a glass of water in front of them.
Talk about those.
Come after me. They've been trying to get me healthy for a while now. We're gonna have to have another zombie attacks that I get at the mall.
He brought the pretzels, so. Oh, gosh, let's not, that's so disruptive.
I like it great.
It was so disruptive.
Well, we're going to forty-five.
I think we're gonna get to work this active from four-thirty until six-thirty in the morning, or some four-thirty PM afterward. That way, it doesn't.
Your suggestion is take it to one, a hundred and forty thousand?
I thought you were at one forty-five.
One forty-six twenty-five, yeah.
One forty-six twenty-five.
One four zero six two five.
Yeah, one four zero, that's right.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's just do that. Maybe the hours won't go up as much as.
I think that was really his only other one, because he said his part-time, he could stay within what was in there, and I added the twenty-seven hundred on both sides, the reimbursement and the additional Wi-Fi cost. Is there anything else you talked about?
You got the youth specialist one and two?
That one was in mine.
Okay, okay, okay.
Are you guys okay with that? And then the part-time, a dollar fifty more?
Yeah, when I see those come through, I don't know how he finds people to work.
Hello?
So, hold on, I'll go back to that one, exactly what we're doing. Stuff in my face here.
Taking them from eleven dollars an hour to twelve fifty.
I want to hold off on the part-time salary increase until we just make sure we have enough in there for the existing employees.
All right, what was it?
Jeff was wanting to hold off on the part-time to make sure we have enough for the full-time. So youth specialist one and two?
So. The dollar number I did there, though, would be the same. We wanna wait till after the first of the year, but. Make the change, is that what?
Well, I just wanna know when the pay forms come in. If it's okay or if it's not. But we can wait.
And like I said, we can wait on salary stuff until the end, if you want.
I don't, I don't disagree that we need to probably increase the, the salaries, but I wanna make sure we add enough in there to do, pretty much raise this across the board first. You already got, you did have the youth specialist one and two in there. Yeah, so there's chainsaw, I got a little.
What are you trying to open?
Chalk proof packets.
Oh.
No.
These packets, it's gonna get open.
Because if we're gonna do that, what did you have in for, um, maintenance?
Two thousand dollars.
Across the board for each. Maintenance one, maintenance two, do we even have maintenance?
You're only a maintenance one.
Okay.
Try a different one.
Tire receiving, I saw that.
Throw it away?
Yeah.
Are you turning on it?
This one, yeah. This one set open here.
Yeah, don't put that back in the box.
Have directions?
Well, yeah, both sides were chewed on. Okay, and then I said, I saw it set open here, so.
Okay, so then road and bridge. Let's start it, we can get anywhere, planning is part.
What page?
Fifty-four is planning. Two hundred dollars is postage. General fund. Last year, they spent two seventy-five, this year, they've spent a hundred and seventy-five, estimated to be two seventy-five. I gave them three hundred, they want five.
I don't know, I've got a roll of Christmas stamps, or fifty-five bucks.
Where's planning revenue come from?
Permit, building permit. Very little of their total.
We need to look at the permit cost. What is it? Twenty-five bucks, still?
I don't know.
I don't know either. How are you with the hat on?
Haven't had full permit for, for long, I don't know where it is.
You pass it on to the.
Who is it? Teresa?
But that was their only change.
It takes, so why do they increase on postage?
Just his estimation was higher than mine.
I mean, so as our, as our costs continue to go up, our permit costs probably oughta go up.
Mm-hmm.
At least the same as the costs that are increasing, so.
If it's fair, we can sit down and justify it, that. If you're building new, you have to have them come out and do, how many inspections? Three?
Probably several, you know, foundation, structural, electrical, plumbing.
I think that's all the same person. So, you'll do, you'll come back and make sure whether putting it out is where it's supposed to be, and foundation. And then your electrical plumbing, and probably a final one.
Septic. I think that might be a different, is that a different permit, probably?
Yeah, I saw.
Two, that's two, yeah.
Right.
How long has it been since we've raised our?
I sent Larry an email, so.
I'm just.
I'm going there.
I'm not saying to do it just to be doing it, but if, if we haven't raised the cost in ten or fifteen years or something, you know, our costs surely go up.
Well, so, obviously, if you, uh, you know, if you haven't raised the cost in, say, five or ten years, and now you have a big increase in costs, everybody's gonna balk at that, but if you were to look at your costs on a yearly basis, and you raised them five bucks.
Yeah.
You know, who's gonna bitch about five-dollar increase in permit costs? Probably nobody, but, you know, you could get, you know, five dollars a year, or whatever that is. You know, incremental increases, not a big deal, but when you don't do those for ever, and you double it.
They're like school tax, yeah.
Well, who does that permit, who's the inspection's for?
For the homeowner, or the builder, or whoever.
Not for me, hell, I'm, I'm watching it every day, I'm making sure they know what they're doing, and I'm building a house, so.
Yeah, but you don't have.
More or less for the county to make sure that we have decent houses here, because the ones that don't have any, uh, any kind of.
Inspections.
Planning and inspections, you go back and you try to, when you're selling houses, you run into these things, so you find out where it happens and what happens if you don't have the planning in there. There's nobody watching, so when you go to buy something, you're more or less protecting your citizens that are buying stuff later on that road, too.
Right.
But, you know, if I'm building my forever house, I don't necessarily need anybody coming in to do the inspections. I know what's going on, I know who I'm gonna be hiring, it's gonna be reputable, licensed.
Well, you are, but then you have, are we still on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going there too, but I don't.
Yeah.
And you have other people that'll cut every corner in the book and, um.
And then they'll try to sell the house to somebody, the first-time buyer, or somebody that's.
Right, or you have a, or you have a septic system that's running into the creek, or O-T-H over the hill.
Not even.
And it's just like you said, it's a vicious circle. If you don't do that, you'll end up in a worse shape and pay more money.
But in that instance, it's not for the homeowner necessarily.
It depends, if it's coming into our sewage, if it's going into our streets, if it's not, it's causing a, you know.
It's almost a public health thing.
Right.
Public welfare, so. You start letting people sell houses, and they don't have a, the right electrical done in there, I mean, you can have valves burned out. Plumbing.
But where would the lending institutions follow and all that be, you know, if you're, no inspections or whatever, you're gonna lend anybody anybody a house in the county?
So what do we decide on postage, just leave it?
We're gonna tell them to go to cross the river.
I don't know, are we using more postage?
Why, why do we have more postage?
They asked.
I don't think we have more postage.
You know, Larry's, Larry's leaving us, it's their last budget, so no.
Second last, he'll be here for the budget next year.
No, he won't. He says this is the last one.
No.
If he's here through December, he'll be here for the budget.
He said one more.
He said you cry.
We had him trade.
More postage or no?
Oh, crap, I grabbed a vegetarian. So.
It's good for you. That's good for you.
No.
Yes or no?
We're gonna, we're gonna increase it to four hundred. No.
I think he's trying to seek some bias. He's like, well, if we raise postage, they won't notice this other thing.
Postage for who?
Planning. Planning.
Who got vegetarian?
Sorry, that was one of them.
I have a no, a no, and a...
No. I thought he was wanting to go up to four hundred or something.
Well, that's what I just suggested, four hundred, but...
Oh, I already touched this one.
Okay, parks, do you want to increase the amount where reversing road bridge for parks? If you're going to go out for mowings, that's a moot point.
I would wait, and let's see what we do on... Cutting.
So, if you look at, health is already getting their lot taken care of by somebody else. You got Greg spending time mowing all these other properties, and then you have public works going out and mowing all these other properties. And you got equipment for both of them. So, get rid of the equipment, Greg wants more mowers and more trailers or something.
Well, he needs something for when it snowed. But I think both pieces of equipment, that first snow, we had neither one work, so...
Well...
I don't know.
I had somebody who will be remaining unnamed, but last year was going to give us a price for cutting stuff, using his own equipment, his own truck. I mean, I, I think we need to try that year. Maybe two years and see how it pans out.
Okay, I'm not changing that one at the moment.
I mean, don't, I'm not saying change it necessarily in the budget, but I'm seeing if we can get some...
If we're going to do that, maybe we just contract for snow removal too. I mean, that's not to say that Greg might not have to grab a shovel and throw the ice melt here or there, but...
Do you really think you're better off? I gotta go.
Well, maybe. I don't know much overtime, we're paying heaven coming to supplies. Huh? We're pushing snow?
Yeah.
At three in the morning?
Greg is up here.
I mean, not that it's...
Greg's the only one out here pushing snow, cleaning parking lots and all, everything by himself.
Well, the courthouse here...
Public works coming.
He's going to have both, he's going to have both over on Adams here.
You're telling me we don't have any overtime involved?
And I guess we're pushing snow over on the lot, the lot at Adams.
We might as well leave this on until we...
Public works is doing it.
What time is it?
Start again at eight thirty.
Five after twelve.
Eight-thirty, I think, tomorrow morning. We don't, we can shut it off.
We can, yeah.
We don't even have to bring it up to go into possession.
You don't even know how much we're spending on snow removal at our lots because public works is doing EMS, they're doing health, they're doing, they're doing all these lots, and you don't even know that they're doing it.
Yeah.
Greg's just probably doing the sidewalks.
I make a motion we recess until four-thirty.
Till one-thirty.
Till one-thirty?
All right, one-thirty.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Well, we've talked about doing this a couple of times, so I think we need to look at doing it. And that's going to be a fun one to bid too, do we put it like an all-in-one package? And then bid it in different packages, and then, you know, maybe somebody doesn't want to do...
We moved, Greg. I moved, Jeff second.
So, at one-thirty, we'll...
We recessed till one-thirty.
At one-thirty?
Yeah. Nope.
No.
We got to close session.
I like, is everybody, I make everybody sit for, okay, we're going to call them into order, it's Tuesday, December third, twenty nineteen. May I stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Morning of the morning.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed.
November twenty nineteen, party's filed, and the November twenty nineteen, party's filed.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
A couple of Christmas open houses this afternoon. Lending department, Jeff thinking, and the financial, governmental relations and finance for Central Bank. Meeting tomorrow. Friends of NRA dinner Thursday, company extension meeting Thursday. I think there's an Eastside Business Association meeting Friday morning. Christmas parade Saturday. About it.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, I got, yeah, I got Central Bank down. Thursday, I got Central Bank. Friday, I'm ringing the bell, Lions Club's ringing the bell, so is Wardsville Lions. At nine o'clock down in front of Central Bank, so anybody wants to come down and put money in my bucket, Kristen, I'll take it. Living Windows is Friday night, and News Tribune has their candy cane house out in front here, and Jeff's going to be the elf. So, everybody come down and get a candy cane from him.
I don't like either one of those, I'm saying.
Uh, Saturday's the Christmas parade at four, Cantorum Concert at seven. Sunday, Samuel's is open, twelve to three. That's all I got.
All this is giving me that picture of the elf on the shelf from Mayhem.
I didn't know we were doing a public service announcement.
Well, I just figured, you know...
Advertising for our businesses.
We're down to three weeks till Christmas, uh... That's, we're...
We'll give him cash, that's a sandwich money.
So, I think the only thing that I have that you guys haven't talked about is MSP, CP presentations on Monday. Did you guys not get that?
Yeah, it's off the counter somewhere.
Noon Monday, um...
Yeah, I didn't put it on there because I didn't have, because we have a meeting, I skipped it, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because close.
It says council chambers, so I'm not sure if that's down the city or where that is, but those presentations are coming back for MSP.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And then we had a pre-trial meeting yesterday, um, over at the courthouse, so still working on improving things there, so... That's it.
Okay. Commission comments, no bids and contracts? No unfinished business? No new business accounts payable?
Um, we don't have this week, so skipped that.
Okay. Signing of contract for twenty nineteen dash thirty Medical Services, Cole County Jail.
This was for the bid award of last week with advanced correctional healthcare, I just need to sign a contract for it.
So, this was the same thing that we did last week, or...
Yeah, we're, you had two bids and we, uh...
This was for a year and then renewal rate or something, right?
A year and then three a year for a minute.
Okay. I move that we sign the contract for medical services with advanced correctional healthcare.
Say again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Final integration of First Watch System into CAD.
Yeah, Matt had talked about that, he's running a little bit late here, um...
Put that aside.
Want to come back to it?
Yeah, okay. We're going to do a closed session?
Do all the subs done first.
Yeah, we'll do all the other, yeah, okay. Bid award for body scanner.
So, remember, we talked about this a while back, I think it was June, and then whenever, um, Tim went to the national conference, he talked to some other people, we just wanted to make sure what we were... Yeah, yeah, I see you. So, um, what we're recommending is actually the RoMane, and we're looking at the two-year warranty for one sixty-six, two fifty. Reason why we're wanting to go with RoMane is it's a dual view, which excludes one of the, which excludes one of the entities. It has a max weight of six hundred and sixty pounds, which we need to get as much on there as we can. Uh, it's, it's adjustable radiation depending on the weight, so it's not the same radiation for everybody, it depends upon the weight of the individual, how much radiation they'll get. Uh, they have a twenty-four hour response, all the other entities have a forty-eight hour response. And these group, it's a full body view, and it's also has three Missouri jails already, uh, they're utilizing right now. And we've given one visit to Lincoln County to check out how they're doing things and how they're responding to things. And nobody else has any Missouri jails for us to talk to, so with that, our recommendation is the, the two-year warranty for one sixty-six, two fifty. Oh, and there's a four-hour, it's a four-hour training on this one, and one of them was a twenty-hour, which one? I don't remember, but... Yeah, it, there was one of them that had a twenty-hour training cycle, there's just no way. That's thousands of dollars in overtime we need to spend for that, so for that, we recommend that the, uh, we do the ADN Compass TV dual view under RoMane Companies.
So, I know you said six hundred and sixty pounds, so it's a fairly large individual. What's the entrance and exit width on that?
Uh, it's plenty big enough for that, and they stand, they don't have to move through it either, they stand on a, they stand on a bracket and moves them through the back.
So, it's four foot wide?
Uh, at lea, I don't know the answer to that, I would say at least four foot wide.
Which one was it you were looking at first?
Actually, we were looking at the RoMane first.
Or which one did you say that y'all wanted to get, and then they said they...
Well, we looked at the command source on the very top.
Command source, okay.
Yeah, but that's the one that single view and twenty hours of training.
And you mentioned something too when we talked last week, but if you needed to, you could pick it up and...
Well, that, that's an additional, so when we bid this out, we bid the body scanner, and then we bid out a, a NARC, an explosive detection. It's a separate, and we decided not to go with that because it's, it's an extra fifty thousand, it's maybe something that we will, our forty thousand. But it may be something that we look at next year, but right now, we just want to get the body scanner there and set up.
So, you're going to add that to it, or...
We can add it to it, yes, and it is mobile too, so we can be able to, if, if, if next year we decided that we went ahead and wanted to get this, we could, we could, uh, pick it up for instance and bring it over to the courthouse if they had a deal going on and could look at purses and stuff. Yes, I assume, I, I really don't know how to, I really didn't pay much attention to that, the only thing I was worried about was the scanner.
So, this comes with all the software and hardware and everything that's needed?
Standalone, they asked that they be able to have access to the internet, but it's not, it's not required. It's a standalone system all by itself. There is an eight-foot exclusion zone all the way around it, so once in operation, you can't be within eight foot of it. We've already measured downstairs and we have plenty of space for that.
Okay. And we're able to get it in the facility and... No problem?
No problem.
Okay.
Uh, it's one, one, I think it's not, yeah. Yeah.
Fine.
John talked to us last week about it each individually, I guess, so I just wanted to try to get him with some kind of question.
Assume we budgeted for this?
No, this would come out of contingency.
All right. You guys good with that too?
I'm good, yeah.
I move that we award the body scanner to RoMane Companies for the dual view with the two-year warranty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion, approval of jail plumbing supplies.
Yep, I don't know, Greg?
I'll throw in a bus front on Wednesday. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're running into a situation over in the jail on the pods. For a year, we're going on almost ten years, so those parts and pieces being over there, I should have brought you what they look like. Uh, we've been repairing them, but the repairing cost versus the new cost is starting to get almost equal. Repair costs, uh, we're repairing it as what we can, uh, but the repairs are not lasting like they used to because they're just wearing out. Uh, the diaphragms, the timers that control how long the water stays on in the cells. Uh, and we're just getting to the point where we're having to buy some new ones. I got with John a couple of weeks ago, and he said he's going to have to put it on the commission because he needs a ton of money. Looking at about three thousand dollars worth of parts. I am going to get with you to see if we can buy direct instead of going through a secondary source, maybe we can get parts cheaper. We're needing roughly thirty-four hundred dollars right now.
Do you have a place to fall from, or...
Our building maintenance class, where they usually come from is we don't have any money in it, so we'd have to come from contingency also.
Are you buying like a case of them then, or...
Yeah, I'm buying thirty-four hundred dollars worth of parts and repairs to keep us going. I went ahead and ordered them already because we had to pull two Alpha Medical to get two of the cells back up and going to keep them utilized. Once these parts get in, we'll have to put stuff back on medical. There's over eight hundred units, eight hundred of these little deals over there that control the hot water and cold water for the cells, for the sink and the shower, so... Like I talked to Chris earlier, I want to see if there's something better we could look at to use, but I have a feeling I'm not going to find anything for how it's plumbed in already, so... Questions?
We need, we need some options, you know, we talked earlier, about the last ten years is a piece of junk, so, I mean, I'm not buying them again. So, we need to find a better way to do it. If we have to rip out plumbing and redo plumbing, whatever it's going to take to make it last for fifty years, so...
See what I can do.
I'll look at that and see.
How long do they last?
They're plastic, it's like everything else, they wear out.
Well, I understand that, but how long do they last?
Manufacturer's saying three to five years.
So, they're lasting how long they're supposed to?
Yeah. And the reboot kits, a new, new valve, single valve is about a hundred and, a hundred and ninety bucks. Uh, rebuild kit for them right now is running about a hundred and five. That's going through a supplier, supply house. Hopefully, we can get where we can hopefully buy direct from them. Uh, they were saying that we'd have to meet their minimums per year, but at this rate, we're going to meet their minimums pretty easy.
How many have we replaced apart?
Jeff, we've rebuilt probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred of them.
So, you need six hundred more of them basically.
Probably.
That could come up tomorrow, or it could last three years.
Yeah.
It's a budget time, might as well throw it in there. Because it sounds like you're going to need them. I mean, I would disagree with what Chris says, if you can find some other option, but it could get rather expensive going in there and replacing the valves and everything.
I'll look if we have a discount and we'll see if we can get on a national count with them, that way we don't, we don't have to pay the middle guy, market.
Well, what Greg says is there's two valves for every sink, so at a hundred and ninety bucks a pop, I mean, you're four hundred dollars per sink. That's, that's crazy.
Sink and then the showers got two valves on too.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah, somebody sold us a bag of goods there.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah, so Matt come in. We will go back to final integration of First Watch System into CAD.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So, this is the final piece of the First Watch that we had basically separated, you guys had initially approved the total amount, and we separated it out because we weren't sure which CAD system, if we were going to stay with our current CAD or look at a different CAD. Um, and so this... Um, and so this, because we're staying with our current CAD, this is that final piece that we need, so. Again, they had separated it out, um, just so that we could continue the integration piece, and this is that final piece that they pulled out initially.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there a cost on that too?
There is.
Okay. Okay. So there was, there was two options, one was a financing option, and one was the basically, um, pay all at once. You guys are good with the option two?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So I move that we award and sign the contract with First Watch for the second data source, uh, CAD second phase, option two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion approval of IT switches.
Brian?
Sir.
Brian.
You're up.
Come on.
Quit sleeping.
Time's wasted.
So, we just have a few switches left to purchase for the sheriff's office. We're out of, so down in the jail, uh, right across from Tim Harden's office is one of the, the switch closets, and we're completely out of ports there, and then that's also out of support. So I was talking to the sheriff, and I would like to go ahead and get approved the purchase of like three final switches. One's a stack in, the other's just separate, uh, for this budget year.
Okay, cost wise?
I don't have it yet, I suppose.
But it's about five thousand.
It's about five grand.
It's more than that. Well, it was like fifteen, wasn't it?
Uh, I don't know. I didn't bring that paper with me.
I haven't had it.
Hang on a second, I'll get it.
Oh.
So these are switches or servers, or?
Switches, yeah, because that one's switches.
Yeah, fifteen, seven.
Yeah.
That was for all of them?
Yeah. Yeah, it includes, uh, yeah, that and main is, uh, the total line is, yeah, fifteen, fifteen, seven, twenty-nine, twenty-six.
And that money will be coming from?
Has to come from contingencies to, to later in the year, we don't have the money there. And we can either buy it through contingency this year, or we can add it to our, uh, capital improvements for next year. But I think he was wanting to move forward sooner rather than later. And then we'd have to change the budget again. Yay!
Gosh, we're giving him new floors, you'd think that'd be enough.
I know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we can go ahead and buy the switches now, but, I mean, I just don't want to be buying stuff, taking it out of contingency and not thinking about it as we start budget in this next year, so. If we're, if we're buying it now, then it decreases the budget going forward in 2020.
That purchase order will come forward because he'll need a purchase order, and so it will uncover the money out of next year's.
So.
But we still need to do a transfer this year.
Yeah, from contingency, that's what I'm saying, so do you, how do you wanna, what do you mean it's gotta come from a budget next year?
Well, so if we're gonna, so we just bought a body scanner for a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so whatever your capital was going forward, I don't know if you had body scanner in there for next year, but.
No, we actually took it out for next year.
I mean, can't have, and I'm just gonna use a number, but can't have five hundred thousand in capital, and the body scanner was in there, and now you get five hundred thousand in capital, and we bought the body scanner this year.
No, no, we, we didn't put in the capital improvements, body scanner's in there, but it zeroed out because we knew we were gonna buy it this year.
I get that, but, so, if you had five hundred thousand with a body scanner in there and you spent a hundred and sixty-six, now you got three hundred and thirty-four thousand left in capital going forward for next year.
I, I understand what you're saying, Chris, what I'm saying is, we didn't put, we didn't put it in a budget for next year, so it's not in there for me to be able to, to take that extra that you're saying.
So this is just something that just all of a sudden came up?
What's that?
The body scanner.
No, it came up this, beginning of this year, then when we talked about it, if you remember, in January, February, it came to you guys, and we were gonna do it in June because the need arisen, and we were gonna do it out of contingency then.
I mean, we just, we don't have an endless amount of money to just keep buying stuff, is my point.
But we don't have to do the switches, but we don't have to do the switches.
I mean, it's not just the switches, I mean, we just, I, I get that we need to, we need to do stuff, and we need to be a little bit, uh, you know, flexible in how we do things, I mean, but as we roll into a budget year, we just can't, we can't spend everything down. Keep the same amount in the budget going forward. But we can get into that later, so, whatever you guys want to do on the switches.
Yeah. Just move ahead.
We need to do it.
I don't know, I was looking at maybe doing it, I mean, if we get it twenty-five days earlier, what's the big deal? Brian, is it gonna be a big deal? Wait till next year's budget?
It will not, it will not be a big deal as long as they don't break between now and then, and then it will become a big deal. Then it turns into an emergency.
Well, if it's an emergency, it's totally different.
Yeah, those switches go out, it'll, it'll effectively take down the jail, so.
But right now, we're fine.
Right now, it's fine?
We'll survive for thirty days.
You bet.
So if we just ununtil.
I, I can't tell you, that stuff.
We have President Baldwin, I know exactly what to do.
Those switches.
So if it goes down, how quickly, how quickly?
Probably, probably three or four days. Yeah, I could probably get something used or something like that that we have leftover, if we have it reprogrammed and things like that, but, um, I mean, you're spending my own money and labor there. I, I think it needs to be done soon rather than later. It was oversight on my part for this budget year, but I come up three switches short for the sheriff's.
There goes his desk.
I'm willing to sit on the floor for the sheriff.
It's supposed to be stolen for a while.
I'm good with moving forward.
Yeah, I think.
There you go, we got you.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for the.
Okay, okay. We gotta keep moving, by golly, it's, it's, okay.
I'll pick my fights today, we got budget, talks.
Okay.
Oh.
They wanna go ahead and do it, we're gonna get it. We hit them now, we got it.
Okay, discussion of EDAC appointees and terms and Heartland Port Authority appointment and MMRPC appointment.
Okay, so, we have this, uh, Economic Development Advisory Committee, and I don't know, somebody sent something on that that Gary Wilbers and Peewee Fark, I think, said on, that this.
That was a nine-one-one committee, wasn't it?
Well, maybe it was.
Yeah.
So that's what I meant to put on here, but, uh, anyway, so they've been on the, uh, on that committee since, uh, two thousand and eleven. I don't know if there's any terms or anything else that, uh, go with that, but I would think that there'd be terms for all those positions. And then also that, has that board met anytime?
They have meetings.
Like yearly, or?
They have meetings.
I, I.
So the board doesn't meet?
I called Gary Wilbers, and I think he's appointed by the city, he would continue to serve. I called Peewee Fark, Peewee Fark does not wish to continue to serve on that committee. He'd like to be on road and bridge, uh, if you ever have an opening.
I mean, I just, I just wanted to go over it.
It's supposed to be quarterly, but.
Well, Peewee had expressed the same thing to me, but from what I understood, they haven't really been meeting anyway because they really haven't anything to meet on.
Discuss.
Right.
So, I mean, you can do like a lot of other people, have meetings, just not meetings, but I'd rather settle with an email, so.
I think we have an application by County Cunningham, uh, saying she would serve on this, this was something she did in twenty eighteen. And I think, is there a lab in, or, I don't know who that?
I don't know, and I'm not ready to appoint anybody to that, uh, I mean, position, and, but, I mean, if we have someone in mind, that, that would be ideal, but, anyway. I mean, surely there's more to discuss than just an email, but, but I don't know, because I don't serve on it.
A lot of the issues get worked out at the chief's meeting, uh, when we're there, the PD always shows up, all, most of all entities show up, and we're able to discuss issues with nine-one-one. Very rarely have we had to push it to the nine-one-one Advisory Committee. Truthfully, the, the PD is very good to work with on that, they, they understand and try to work through issues.
I think the last time I recall, that's when they brought in the new CAD system, I'm grateful to let them know what they do, that's about the thing, I remember.
I think, I just think as far as that goes, you know, we, we need to kind of know what's going on with nine-one-one since it's such an integral part of our operations too, so. Anyway, and we seem to be in the dark on that one.
Well, I know a guy that's retiring soon, that would be a good fit for the nine-one-one advisory committee.
Ooh, yeah, I do too.
I'm not mentioning his name, but he's sitting over there.
You're gonna find out real soon if he's concealed in care anymore. Keep volunteering as some stuff like that.
He doesn't even know all the stuff I volunteered him for.
Good idea.
Anyway, so there was, the other.
I wouldn't do that.
So I don't care, you guys want to talk about that anymore, or?
So we're basically just gonna get some people to go and get us the list, get the positions filled.
Two openings or three openings?
So, the Heartland Port Authority, um, I have someone that's willing to serve on that, and, um, just kind of reached out and tried to find somebody that would be a good fit for that, and, uh, Jeff Naught has agreed to, um, serve, uh, a three-year term for that. Just need him to get the paperwork filled out. And then, um, the RPC appointment, Virginia Bain was, uh, with the City of St. Martins, and she was serving in that capacity. She no longer wishes to serve, but, uh, talked to Doug Reese, um, and he would be willing to serve on that as well, so.
How long are those appointments?
I think they're three years as well, and that was, I mean, that's pretty typical. The Port Authority kind of staggered one, two, and three when we initially started, um, but, uh, anyway, if you guys got somebody else that, uh, you'd like to recommend for either of those, that's.
I think those are, I think, those are both good.
With some of the small communities on the, the east side too, and see if the efforts might potentially have made one of.
Sure, going to RPC?
Yeah. I'm not saying they will, I mean, Doug is, uh, real involved with stuff, so, it'd be a good fit for him as well.
I saw, he's on the bicentennial committee, and I also put him on the census committee, so.
And as, as far as the RPC goes, I mean, whether you're a member or not, I mean, you're welcome to come to any and all the meetings, and, and we, you know, they've worked with, uh, St. Thomas and different people on different demolitions and, and a lot of different things, so. I mean, David knows all the people in the community, so he's working with all of them, it's just a matter of who, who can we get to come to the meetings?
Well, when Larry and Larry retire, they, they can serve.
Goodness. Not letting them retire, huh?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to do the closed session now, or do we want to do that at the end of our budget hearings?
We have another one then, so.
Right.
Well, I know, yeah.
That's until one-thirty. Yeah, I'd like to do it now, if you don't care.
Okay, okay.
I may be going to closed session pursuant to section six-ten-point-oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri for security issues, sub nineteen.
Roll call? Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.